Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. This is a committee of the whole on Bill Number 177 dash 32, an act making appropriations for the operations of the executive legislative and judicial branches of the government of Guam for fiscal year ending September 30, 2014, making other appropriations and establishing miscellaneous and administrative provisions. At the onset, I'd like to say that Bill 177 is a result of the many discussions that we've had over the last several weeks with regards to proposals that have been placed before this body for action and discussion, discussion and ultimate action. The legislature was able to pass a budget bill, Bill 38, which was acted upon by this body, sent to the governor, and the governor vetoed the bill, as you all know. There were, of course, elements of that bill that were considered and amended on the floor, and the majority, those amendments continue to be reflected, most especially in the administrative and miscellaneous provisions in this bill, including, of course, some of the revenue numbers that had been adopted at that time. Since then, of course, the legislature has not been able to, had made motions to override that, the override has failed, and so we went back to the drawing board initially, of course, in trying to work out an alternate bill. Before acting on an alternate bill, the governor, of course, sent down a special bill, a call for special session on Bill Number 1 dash S, in which he presented his proposal. And the bill failed to pass this legislative body, and we are now back in legislative session with another proposal that incorporates many of the same elements of Bill 1 dash S and Bill 38. The revenue, for the record, you know, I, as chairman of the Committee on Appropriations, had attempted to present a bill that covered some of the shortfalls that have been identified, and where those shortfalls resulted from were basically revenues that would not, we were not comfortable with in adopting. And when we identified those revenue shortfalls, we identified about $35 million worth of revenue shortfalls resulting from either overestimations, resulting from a underprovisioning of the income tax refund provision, resulting from revenues that were banking on revenues being collected upon action that had not occurred, and other factors. And we then presented a budget bill which covered those $35 million by including reductions in operating costs of the government and right sizing the provisions and other factors. The revenue numbers that you see in Bill 177 are the revenue numbers that were submitted by the governor in his latest budget Bill 1 dash S. So basically, they were attested to and verified by the governor's fiscal management team. In addition to the revenues that had been increased, the fiscal management team of the governor's office attested to the reasonable and rational nature in the approach to those additional revenue numbers that were adopted. So while I still feel a little uncomfortable with some of the provisions that allow us to recognize those revenue numbers, the governor has consistently stated that he is confident that those revenues will be collected. Members of this body have expressed confidence in that by voting for the governor's revenue numbers in Bill dash 1 S, called it physically responsible to adopt those revenue numbers, and this is a reflection of the revenue numbers as submitted by the governor in Bill 1 dash S. So with that, as the discussion, we will then proceed with discussion and going chapter by chapter, as we have in the past, amendments or deletions of the elements of the chapter, and we will then respond to the questions that any members of the body may have with regards to the revenues and expenditure proposed to contain in Bill Number 177 dash 32. So we will begin with Chapter 1, which is the general provisions. Of course, this is the revenue numbers. The short title is the General Appropriations Act of 2014. Section 2 are the estimated revenues for 2014, and that goes from page 1 to 2, all the way to including of special funds. Those revenue numbers extend to page 5. So no addition or deletion on title, on the short title? Not, yes, Senator?
Actually, Mr. Chair, I listened to your opening, and I understand, and I followed along pretty well. The thing is, is that I think in order to accept that and accept the discussions, I think it'd be beneficial for the body to have the fiscal team here, fiscal policy team from the administration here, to confirm those numbers and also to confirm the categories in which we've, you know, agreed to, or, you know, and if the body doesn't agree, we can disagree with them right here on the floor, but I think it would be important at this point to work through those numbers together as if we were starting from the beginning with the budget.
I don't understand what you mean by work through the numbers. You don't agree that the total general fund revenue is 722-871-981? Would you like to amend or?
No, Mr. Chair, what I'm saying is, is that I, we're going to continue through the body of the bill, and while we may say on its face that number is acceptable with the overall number and going through here, the devil will be in the details when we get into the body of this bill as presented. I know we've already found at least two or three issues.
Then you can make those amendments when we get to those sections, Senator Duñez. We are looking at the revenue numbers. If you don't agree with any of the revenue numbers, I will entertain a motion to amend or delete. So on Section 1, beginning on page 1 through 2, 4, up to page 5, where we get to the total revenues, the grand total, I will entertain a motion from you or any member of this body to amend any of those numbers if you feel that they are in error, or you feel that you want to increase or decrease those numbers.
Okay, so for the record, we won't be inviting the fiscal policy team from the administration.
Not at this time, unless, okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you, thank you for that.
Senator Hagen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I do understand the concern of the previous speaker in terms of requesting representatives from the executive branch to join us, and certainly it doesn't preclude any of us as members of this body to request their presence in the gallery.
Sure.
Because certainly that would make themselves even that much more accessible. But in terms of looking at the numbers and the deviations from the originally passed budget bill from this body, my understanding is that those revenue adjustments reflect what was retransmitted from the chief executive down to this legislative body. So that being the case, those are accepted numbers by representatives of the administration, and certainly I don't think that there would be any secondary dispute on their part if, in fact, those numbers are reflected in this budget bill now. So just for purposes of clarity, Mr. Chairman, I think I need to recognize that, yes, although there's some slight reservations in terms of the numerical adjustments on a few categories, certainly as chair, you yielded to the retransmission of the governor's budget shortly after the initial budget was vetoed, you yielded to the governor's numbers, and that's what we're discussing right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That is correct. This, these number, revenue numbers is exactly the same as what was submitted by the governor in 1 dash S. And as my colleagues could recall, that was labeled a physically responsible bill, and so if nothing changed, then I would assume that those who supported that still think it's physically responsible and will not have any additional questions unless they change their minds. So once again, I'm going to ask for a, a call for a, an amendment on Section 2 on the revenue numbers, there being none. Authorization to pay and prioritize payment of tax refunds. Again, the provision for the refunds is 120 million. Addition or deletion? Section 4, revenue collections in excess of quarterly, oh, I'm sorry, Senator Lim Tiakko. Okay. Section 4, revenue collections in excess of quarterly collections. This is a provision that would require the governor to deposit into the supplemental appropriations revenue fund at the end of each quarter, revenues that are collected above the governor's revenue projections for that quarter, and those become available at some future point in time for appropriation by the legislature. And so it would allow then revenues exceeding collection, projections and collections, both, to be segregated so that that becomes revenues that are not appropriated because of the fact that they're above the projections, the collections, and the appropriation levels, and would be subject to further appropriation by the legislature. Senator Lim Tiakko.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, my question is in reference to Item B of Section 4, and if you could just help walk me through the rationale behind the excess quarterly revenue collections in the sense that once these funds are deposited into the SAR and is subject to legislative appropriation, in the event that the annualized revenues don't come to fruition, what then are, do we, do they have access to this SAR fund and can spend it appropriately? Because, you know, revenue projections are going to go up, you know, the ebb and flow of tax collections, so in the event that the annualized revenue doesn't match up with the forecast in the budget, what, what access would the, would they have to that money? Or does it, once again, need to be appropriated?
No, the current budget allows the governor to access that, to access revenues in excess of collections. And so all this does is it puts it in the SAR fund, so my, if, if the revenue collections on the second or third quarter fall below the projections, then they have access to that fund to equal out the appropriation levels, basically. So they, they, they can draw from that fund if it's not, you know, we, we just have to make sure we don't appropriate too quickly. And so we would, as, as the committee tracks these funds, when they dip in the second quarter, then these excess revenues can be allowed access to the administration to make up for that dip, as long as, again, it does not exceed the collections and the projections.
Yeah, and I guess that's my concern, because if, if there is a significant excess in, let's say, first quarter, and we don't realize the shortfall until the fourth quarter, we're basically kind of potentially appropriating revenues that are not, that do not fully cover the fiscal year budget, so, you know, the, so I'm trying to understand the rationale behind that. And how could we protect the revenue so that it's available for the full fiscal year, and then, of course, in the event that there's a surplus, that, you know, it could be deposited into this SAR?
Yeah, let me, let me have the Office of Finance and Budget respond to part of that, but I also want to just say before they respond to that, that the revenue projection numbers are performed by the administration, so they have a weighted average in terms of their annual collections and their experience. So they go back, say, you know, we collect 20% of the revenues here, 30% in this quarter, et cetera, based on a weighted average, and so forth. So they, they, if there was a shortfall in those things, it would be based on administration's numbers and projections and not the legislature's. But I understand what you, what you mean in terms of should something happen catastrophic in the third quarter, and we've already appropriated those monies, then we would create a shortfall there. And I understand what you're saying.
This language was patterned after what's in the current budget act. So for instance, this year, the administration, and I believe it's Executive Order 1326, has spent the excess above reserves on various things without the fiscal year being in conclusion. So we don't know if we're going to hit our numbers this year, however, the money's still been spent, and that was the case last year as well. So it's just taking the same pattern as what's been for the last two years, using the SAR fund, which was the intent, I believe, of the legislature for the excess collections above revenue projections.
Yeah, so even, the governor is spending those revenue excess even before finishing out the fiscal year. So it just, this just allows an accounting for those, for those revenues, basically, I think, you know? Because the governor's accessing, has already declared those revenues excess of collections based upon the quarterly reconciliation, and then he's spending it, not knowing whether he's going to be short in the fourth quarter. But all this does, it parks it in there, and it accounts for that, for those, what would be declared excess collections. And again, it's based on collections, not, not on, on the projected revenues that they developed and actual collections.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Lim Tiakko. Section 5, once again, the additional child tax credit is a reimbursement from the federal government, the reimbursable portion, and this allows the reimbursement to go to the provision, and then rev tax is allowed to access 10% of these reimbursements for vacancies and overtime in the income tax processing, tax enforcement, motor-vehicular division, again, to just to ensure that rev tax has a, other than the appropriation, that they have this revenue to help them with tax processing. Section 6 is the debt service continuing appropriations. Our total debt service for this fiscal year is $68,113,962. Senator Hagen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Just on the, on the debt service going into the next fiscal year, what is, if any, what is the adjustment from the debt service that was paid out for fiscal year 13? What is the adjustment outward, or the increase, or the decrease in terms of our debt obligation that we already paid in fiscal year 13? What is the comparison versus fiscal year 14, please?
Okay. We're going to put that up on the screen here. We'll pull it up in a minute. And that number is in the committee report as well, that we issued?
I'm just bringing it up again, Mr. Speaker, just so that, in fact, the public can understand exactly what the variance is between 2013 and 2014 in terms of debt obligation. And then obviously, I know that we're still a year out, but that simultaneously, we also, or concurrently, we also need to start looking forward to the adjusted debt service that will be, will have to be paid on the subsequent fiscal year. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Douglas, did you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In line, just to expand a little bit on that question by Senator Hagen, do we have something that can show us what the next fiscal year, what the adjustments would need to be?
For 2015?
15, yes.
It'll be an increase of about 11 million from the 68. So this year's fiscal year debt of 68 will increase by 11 million in 2015.
Is that, is that the year when we expect from the, the most recent bonds?
That will be a portion of it. The year after that, there'll be another increase, because what we've done is capitalize the interest and the first year's payments by borrowing money to pay that debt. So there'll be an additional increase that will come in 2016.
And do we know what that is roughly?
Yeah, we'll find that for you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm glad you're thinking far ahead. And I think that, again, that information is in the committee report, the debt abstract. 16, another 80 million, jump 7 million in 2017, 87 million in 2018. They pretty much levels out after that, and probably not till another 10, 20 years, we'll have a falloff because of paying down debt. The only time we've had a falloff is when we refinance. Okay, all right. Mr. Vice Speaker, and then Senator San Niklas.
Not wanting to be difficult, Mr. Chairman, but why is there a difference in the governor's bill for debt service of 1.5?
Oh, the difference is, there's a 1.5 million dollar additional rent for JFK that is to be paid for fiscal year 14. In this bill, we saw that there was a, there was an overappropriation based on actual payments made to the government of Guam Retirement Fund for Supplemental Annuity. And when we took the difference between the appropriation and the actual payouts, that resulted in a savings of about 1.5, about 2 million. And so what we did was, in order to cover that $35 million shortfall, we have in the budget, which was, which was passed in 38, we're covering that 1.5 million from this year's revenues, being the difference between the appropriation and the actual payout on supplemental annuities. And so that's the reason why there's a 1.5 million dollar difference.
Thank you.
And it's on page, page 163 of, of the bill, and it's up here on the screen. Okay. Mr. Vice Speaker, is that, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'm just a little concerned. In our original budget that we passed and that was vetoed and failed to be overridden, we had a, a figure of $797 million. And now this current budget has a figure of $804 million, and we know that next fiscal year, we're going to have a $12 million increase in our debt service. And so my question relative to debt service now and thinking about debt service in the future is, with this budget, assuming everything is equal and we don't grow our revenue by 12 million, in FY 2015, would we be able to contract the budget to account for that extra 12 million expense, or are these appropriations throughout the remainder of the bill, for the most part, going to be continuous and ongoing additional expenses of the government?
I think that it would be additional expenditure levels to the base operation of this government. And that's why in the original bill we sent out, out of the Office of Finance and Budget, we accounted for those and reduced the expenditures. Unfortunately, you know, we couldn't get consensus on the body on, on that action, that being, in my opinion, the more responsible action, but we couldn't get consensus on the body, and there were those that are willing to accept the governor's assurances that those revenue numbers will continue, if not increase, and that we can continue to fund the operations of the government into next year, and then deal with the issue of the year after that with regards to additional growth in revenues. And so it will be up to this body and up to the governor next year to, in the FY 2015 budget, to take a look at that and where we're going to have to either expand or contract, either revenues expand or operations are going to have to contract. And so I think that's the reality of the situation, of trying to pass a budget with agreements on what we can, and noting for those, the issues you raised up, that that will have to be dealt with in the next fiscal year.
So just in a nutshell, then, this 804 million, we're looking at spending close to about the same amount next fiscal year, just to continue operate, the operational level that we're taking, taking the government to with this budget?
Well, minus the debt service fixed costs, yes.
Yeah, and so we, so we know then that we're going to have to grow our revenue by 12 million between now and this time next year, otherwise, we're going to have to cut 12 million from our future budget, because we, we've, we've pretty much maxed out on all of our revenue assumptions.
I agree. Mr. Vice Speaker, did you have any, okay, all right. So debt service. We're now in Chapter 2, Education, the Guam Department of Education. This appropriation number is the same number as presented to us in Bill 1 dash S by the governor. So we have agreed, basically, in taking a look at the governor's proposal and funding the Department of Education, so the new funding level for the Department of Education in this is $219,655,411. 174 of that is, million is in the personnel category, 45 in the object category, and the general fund will provide $188,469,835. Territorial Educational Facilities Fund, $18,333,190. Public Library Service, $796,323. Healthy Futures, 891-754. And the school lunch program, which is inclusive of local collections as well as federal reimbursement of $11,164,309, for a total appropriation of $219,655,41. Increments, again, were not funded by the governor's original proposal, but they have, once again, within the included those fundings in here, including the charter school language that allows for, then, for remittance of 500, 5,500 per enrollee in the Guam Academy per student. And then the other appropriations are for program appropriations to the Department of Education, including Healthy Futures Fund for interclassical sports, health and physical activities, textbooks. We have to reinstate 1.5 million in appropriation for textbooks and collateral material. That was not in the governor's Bill 1 dash S, so that's where we had to, to put that there. And then the others are the languages that were already included in 1 dash 38, in pretty much reporting requirements. The governor did not fund the Solapi Principe Pot allocation, or did not specify it in this bill. We've gone back to what was adopted in proposal before the body and is now back in here in this. So I have Vice Speaker Cruz, and then Senator San Niklas.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. In the personnel section?
Yes.
And my office was doing a review, and we noted a, an increase in FTEs? Was, was our analysis off, or? We showed an increase of about 340 FTEs.
I don't recall that. That may be part of the 278 million dollar request?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, no, the, the funding level are for the teacher funding levels and the existing staffing requirements. We included the vacancies that they did not fill because they just couldn't recruit the teachers, so those, but I don't recall that being 350 additional.
Okay, so the levels that are funded for the Department of Education in this budget are based off their current payroll from the EFSC for local funding, and it includes bringing all of their employees up to their right steps, grades and steps when the increments are released. So there was a significant increase in payroll compared to last year, but it wasn't due to increase in FTEs. So I'm not sure, I haven't seen the report you're referring to, so I can't really speak to that.
Okay.
I have Senators San Niklas, Senator Lim Tiakko, and Senator Yama Shida.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a question regarding a combination of both Section 3 and Section 1, and this is concerning the, the provision for meals for the students, particularly with regards to the charter school. And I first wanted to ask a question on, on the Section 1 item there for school lunch and nutritional meal reimbursement program. The $11,164,309, is that inclusive of the assumption that the Department of Education is going to be funding the meals for the charter school kids as well? Because I understand that we have students who were in the public school that are now still in public school but in the charter still in public school but in the charter school. And so if we're having a movement of students from this eleven million over to this charter school, are we overappropriating because we're still factoring in those students? Or are, or are those students going to be accounted for out of that eleven million?
The, those, the Board of Education decided that the charter school was not going to be part of the DOE Food Service Program. So the eleven million does not include food service for the charter school enrollees. So, and that was done by a board decision, and, and the legislature is not changing, then this number to account for the charter, to, to account for the charter school food service program, because that's a decision, I think, that is internal to the board, so.
So we're still appropriating an amount, I'm assuming that this amount was, was determined without reducing the number of students being served because they're going out of the charter school? But since we're not going to be funding the charter school, do we have an overage, then, technically? Because the, if we're feeding less kids, then the amount should be lower?
It, it could, it could. And I guess that, so I would not speak to that, other than it could result in, in an overage. But it also depends on the number of meals you serve, what you get reimbursed. So if we remove students out of the participating in free lunch and reduce program, we're also reducing the federal reimbursement. So that, it accounts for that side. So, in that respect, we may receive less reimbursement because we now have less students participating in the program. So this, this will adjust based on enrollment.
Okay, and so.
And participation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my, my follow-up question on the same subject, then, is, so the charter school, then, out of that fifty-five-hundred in Section Three, if, because they're going to have to assume their own meal needs, it's going to have to come out of that fifty-five-hundred?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Senator Lim Tiyakko, then Senator Yamashita, then I have Senator Ogden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, just on the same lines on the Section Three, regarding the charter school, it, it's might, it's come to, I think, all of our attention that the budget that they requested, I think, actually calculated it out to over eight-thousand dollars per student. And so with the shortfall in what the former speaker was addressing regarding the mills and the current appropriation, do, are we aware of the ramifications of the, you know, the potential shortfall there? And is there, has there been any request by DOE for us to address that somehow?
Uh, no. The Charter School Council, I believe, submitted to the legislature a request for a per-pupil allocation to the charter school, and this is reflective of that, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Yamashita.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate all the concerns about charter school, and I think this legislature has been incredibly supportive, of saying that appropriation is still alive, as we've first chartered our first charter school four years ago. And so the whole government has been very generous. And I think in, if I may, just to address one of the concerns by one of the senators, we don't even know how many of those students are from our public schools. Those, that kind of data is still being worked out, and it seems like a lot of the, well, a great number of the enrollees are from private schools. So that, that data has been rolled out, so we don't know what it's going to do to our pre-reduced lunch program. And, and the, and the school certainly knows that fifty-five-hundred per, per child was their budget, and so I know that they have been working around that. And then, of course, we can always keep talking. What I wanted to, oh, okay, now I remember, it was, I believe it was, it was also the Senator from Talafoco slash Derrito who raised the FTEs for DOE, and.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Vice Speaker, I'm sorry. Mr. Vice Speaker. So, may, if I may ask Mr. Badasi, you know, so what you were looking at were the currently filled positions, right? Okay. So, you know, Speaker Ben, I got an email where, right now, the Department of Education is going through a process where they are announcing, where they will fill all, every high school will get an administrative officer, then everybody will get an administrative assistant at the elementary level, and then computer operators are going to be filled, and then aides. And when I was speaking with the superintendent, what's funding this? What he did say was that it was current appropriations. So I'm a little concerned, I mean, they're not filled yet, they're just announcing. And so I'm concerned at two different levels. One is when they say they don't have money, but I think they do have money. And then number two is if they're filling, and they are filling, because the announcements are going out, what is that going to do to all of this?
Well, the, the original appropriation was for two, I believe, two-hundred-and-fifteen, sixteen million. So we've upped it to two-nineteen. So that additional funding could be used to cover any shortfalls and personnel costs from the original budget that we had, we had gone into. And I believe the superintendent has the ability to request to move funding from various transfers authorities from his object categories to personnel.
Thank you. And again, I, I think the statement needs to be made, that everyone is really supportive of education. But I also want to state that DOE needs to be accountable. You can't say you don't have any money, and then you, you're hiring. And I do not doubt that schools need, especially the computer operators, for me. But, you know, I, I think there's all kinds of false messages going out. And so, you know, I appreciate the support for education, but I'm also mindful, what is that really going to mean? And so, and as you visit the school, Speaker Ben, I know you were at Okuru last week, we see that there's still lots of room for improvement. And very, but anyway, okay, so it's been already taken into consideration, and it's going to work itself out.
They have an additional four million from the previous proposal. So if they are doing that to put some of the, you know, some of their programs in place, they have lots of room for, in that respect.
Thank you.
Okay. Senator Ogden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Chairman, just, so that I can understand exactly what the allocation is for the fiscal year fourteen, which is at two-nineteen-point-six, what exactly was appropriated to DOE for this fiscal year, please?
Two-twelve. Two-hundred-and-twelve million.
Two-hundred-and-twelve million, of which four-point-five was not utilized. If you, if you recall during the budgetary discussions, Mr. Speaker, four-point-five million dollars was part of the fifteen percent reserve that was never utilized at DOE upon the closure of the last fiscal year? So.
Fiscal year two thousand and.
Okay, I apologize. That was, that was fiscal year two thousand and twelve. But I'm, I'm trying to look at, I guess I'm trying to make a statement here, Mr. Speaker, in terms of looking at allocations, because in fiscal year two thousand and twelve, based on the fifteen percent reserve allocation, four-point-five million dollars was not expended to the Department of Education that otherwise could have been utilized.
Not released.
Okay, was not released, but was it expended?
Well, they couldn't expend it because the administration did not release that.
So that being the case, despite the surplus, the record, recorded surplus of about twenty-plus million dollars, that four-point-five was not utilized out of DOE. So just looking at that in fiscal year two thousand and twelve, and then in fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, two-hundred-and-twelve million dollars was allocated to the Department of Education. In this budget, based on, we understand exactly what the Department of Education had requested in their overall budget request, but looking at the numbers between fiscal year thirteen and the upcoming fiscal year, we're looking at additional seven-point-six million dollars going to the Department of Education. So I just wanted to make sure that that, that picture is, is painted and presented there, that Department of Education, although we're not able to at this point in time, based on the budget that is, has been put together by yourself and by the Office of Finance of Budget, they will be getting an adjustment upward of approximately seven-point-six million dollars, which I think, considering the circumstances and all of the allocations for the entire government of Guam, and that's incorporated into fiscal year fourteen, certainly, that, that would, should help the Department of Education, and we encourage them to utilize all of the funds that are appropriated. Thank you.
Right. And in this fiscal year, on the two-twelve appropriation, based on the last Educational Finance Supervisory Commission report, that they will, based upon their expenditures, current expenditure patterns, they will lapse, or they will have an eleven-million-dollar surplus this fiscal year for the Department of Education.
Now, because, thank you very much for that information. That's excellent information, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Speaker, also, can I just inquire, are you aware of the ARRA funds, if in fact there's any remaining balance that has yet to be expended?
Yes.
That is going to be carrying over to fiscal year fourteen?
It would not carry over. If they don't expend and obligate those funds by September thirty of this year, those funds, according to the MOU and grant application, will be returned, needs to be returned to the federal government. So they, they have, according to the last, to the meeting during the budget, I think they said about twenty-four million left, but they have RFPs and contracts out, of which the largest is the air conditioning, which they said they've resolved, the protest on that. But they, they say that they still are working hard to make sure they obligate those funds before September thirty.
So just so that I can get a, a good handle of exactly what we're looking at into fiscal year fourteen, two-hundred-and-nineteen-point-six million dollars is being appropriated out of fiscal year fourteen funds from the government of Guam, of which there will be an anticipated carryover of about twenty-four million dollars, four facility upgrades based on the ARRA funding that, that should, hopefully should be obligated by the end of September. So in terms of just looking at the Department of Education?
Yes.
And the resources that they have readily available, it would be two-nineteen plus the twenty-four million dollars that you're talking about. So, so hopefully, they'll be able to secure all those funds by then. Thank you very much.
As long as they obligate those.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Senator Siniklas?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. I was just reviewing the numbers again, and I'm noticing that in our previous budget that we passed and was vetoed and failed to override, we appropriated two-hundred-and-fourteen million, and this budget now increases the, the allocation to DOE to two-hundred-and-nineteen million, about five million dollars. I'm noticing that the only real difference is that we are now counting an additional five million dollars in the Territorial Educational Facilities Fund.
That's correct.
It was my understanding, the reason why we didn't include that five million was because that projection is based on the execution of the property revaluation that needs to take place with the, the Department of Revenue Taxation. And I understand that we recently passed a bill to appropriate one-point-four million dollars to execute that. But what will be the timeline for that execution approximately? And is that timeline, a reasonable timeline, to assume that this five million is going to be realized? Because I understand this five million, the Governor says he wants to fund and prioritize education, and this five million is from a source that has yet to actually kick into gear.
We, you know, we asked that question since the very beginning, since the January submittal. And in every step of the way, the administration continues to assure this body and that they will execute that, that they will collect that. And, you know, we resisted it, and, and we didn't put it in our budget, in our original budget. But once again, the Governor, in submitting Bill One-Dash-S, has reassured, you know, members of this body and this legislature that they will execute that and, and collect that money. And we're giving him the benefit of the doubt after, you know, three assurances and three submittals that they will collect that money, so.
My, my concern is that, you know, in the assumption that it's not, it doesn't materialize, I noticed that five million is being placed into Operations Object Categories two-twenty to four-fifty, on page nine, line fifteen. And I'm curious as to those exact Operations Object Categories, are those bodies, are those people that we're going to be hiring? Or are they things that we can manage? In the event that, in, in the event that the five million doesn't come in, because let's say we do, it is for hiring, we do hire five million dollars with the people, you know?
No.
We can't just fire them all of a sudden. So what, what are exactly that? What, is that five million for?
No, it's mostly the TEFF covers their power bill and capital projects. So if they don't get that, they can scale back on the capital projects or put into place energy conservation that would then allow them to make up for that shortfall. We sent a letter to the superintendent, asking him if he's comfortable with the Governor's promise, basically, that he will deliver this money to the Department of Education. And, you know, we did not get any response. When we asked him about this fiscal year, he said that he's working with the administration and that the administration will cover the shortfall should the TEFF not be collected. We received that assurance from both the superintendent and the Director of BBMR, that if they don't collect this money, they'll cover it from other sources to make up for that shortfall.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Dornus?
Just, just so that we have assurances and we understand the discussion that happened in this body with regard to this discussion on, on this funding source, it, wasn't it this body just last week that passed this cheated funds to fund this?
Yes. The Triane Union?
Right. And that, and that was where the revenue would be derived from?
Yes, correct.
To execute. Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because in, in the spirit of cooperation, we, we were the ones who passed the bill here introduced by, I think the Speaker introduced that bill.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes. So, DOE? Vice Speaker Cruz?
Mr. Chairman, I, I was really intrigued by one of your comments, because when the Senator from Timouning asked the question about making sure that the public understands that we, as a legislature, have been and are trying to be as supportive as possible with DOE, and how this, this fiscal year, we appropriated two-hundred-and-twelve million. And in this upcoming budget, the proposal that's now before us, there's a seven-million-dollar increase. You mentioned something about the fact that in their report from the, that special group.
Educational Finance Supervisory Commission.
I really do think that it's important that the public get a full explanation from you, or at least a more elaborate explanation, because I think that's important for them to hear, that that special committee that met realized that though we appropriated two-hundred-and-twelve to them, that they still had money left over, and that we didn't starve them to death.
Yes. And no better person than the chairman of the Educational Finance, Vice Chair, Mr. Badasi.
So, as of the nine-month mark, the, the appropriation levels were showing a lapse of about eleven-point-two million dollars. Those are due to primarily the withholding of spending by the department due to the reserve. That's the best way I can explain it. I mean, they, they haven't accelerated their spending due to, I guess, a fear that they wouldn't get their funding because it's in reserve, and therefore now they're showing a lapse of, of about eleven million. That's, that's the best I can explain what I believe is happening there.
But the reserve was not the legislature.
That's correct.
No, that's correct.
We gave, we appropriated two-hundred-and-twelve, and their fear of what the executive was doing with the reserve caused them to, to cut back. And in spite of that, we've now even increased it in an additional seven. So I really do think that it's important the community understands that, I mean, we're throwing money at them, and, and I, and it's just unfair that we're being criticized and said that we, we're not making them a priority. We're, we're doing it, and we've given, we've appropriated the two-hundred-and-twelve, and it wasn't we, the legislature, that imposed the reserve.
That's correct.
And it wasn't we, the legislature, that was a little concerned, and so it was the department itself that cut back, in spite of the fact that I noticed that in their, in their request for two thousand and fourteen, they, I, I was, they wanted three-hundred-and-forty more people, so. But we are funding them at the level and more than what they've actually been utilizing over the years. So I just wanted that number very clear to the public, that we, we've tried to address their needs.
Okay. Senator Siniklas?
Thank you. I always love the, the directions that the Vice Speaker always takes us in, because my next question is, where is the eleven million?
It's with the administration.
So there is eleven million dollars right now available for DOE?
Based on the, of appropriations, correct.
So when we come into this next budget cycle of this fiscal year, we're appropriating two-hundred-and-nineteen plus a cash balance of eleven? Or is that going to lapse in the fiscal year?
It'll, it lapses in the fiscal year. Yeah, it'll lapse.
So because it doesn't carry over, where's that eleven million dollars going to go?
Back into the general. Back into the general fund.
Back into the general fund?
That's correct.
So when it goes back into the general fund, where's it going to get spent?
It, uh...
The hospital needs money.
If it, if it lapses, then it, the appropriation should, actually it should go to the SAR fund, but because the, the statute says it lapses back into the general fund, then that appropriation is not spent, would not be spent, and would not be active beyond the FY two thousand and thirteen year. So it'll basically be not available and-
But so, so the money, the money is there?
The appropriation is there.
The appropriation is there, but what's the cash reality?
The, well, that's one of the things we're trying to figure out, because we have not been able to get the cash reporting from the, from the administration in terms of matching the cash to the appropriations. We've not been able to get that in terms of the, the reports. They've actually had to go back and restate some reports. They just told us that the July report is going to be late again. And so we, we haven't been able to look at that in terms of matching the cash and collections to the appropriations and expenditures.
And see, this, this whole thing, Mr. Chairman, really bothers me, because if we appropriated two hundred and twelve for FY two thousand and thirteen, and there's eleven million dollars left over, more or less, that means that they were able to operate at two hundred and one. And now we're bringing the appropriation up to two nineteen, assuming they operate again at two hundred and one, that's eighteen million dollars. And how is that not getting to our kids? And how is the, and if it's not getting to our kids, which it obviously didn't, where did it go? And how is money, I mean, it feels like Enron accounting. How is money getting siphoned off to the tune of eleven million dollars for our kids and going elsewhere? I mean, you know, I, I, I want to appropriate as much as we can for DOE, but when the money is not getting to where it's supposed to go, I, I really want to know, where did it go? Do, do we know?
Without those reports being filed in a timely manner, we can't tell you, I can't answer that question. And O of B cannot answer that question as well.
And so just, just so that it's, so it's clear, this legislature did not reappropriate that eleven million dollars?
No, we did not.
The executive branch starved DOE of eleven million bucks, and it went somewhere else?
Right. I guess you could label it that way. I have Senator Lim Tiako, then you, Senator Yamashita, I'm sorry. Senator Lim Tiako?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, in the FY thirteen budget, was there any encumbrance language that these funds might roll over due to an encumbrance?
That's always allowed. That's, that's always allowed in, in the encumbrance of the money. But you, you encumber only against contracts and GG ones, basically, and invoices.
Okay, so, so they, it could be encumbered. It, based on the report, it has yet to be spent, but it could be encumbered?
They, they cannot encumber it if it's not released.
Oh, not released, okay, so. Now, it, but there could be potentially methods or, or certain contracts that they're looking to encumber the funds for in anticipation of the release?
Yes.
The Department of Education usually runs anywhere between a two to three million dollar encumbrance on a monthly basis. So inclusive of their contracts and outstanding invoices, in any given month, it could range from two to four million, two to three.
But, but in regards to this air conditioning protest, there is, there, there may be some-
But that's ARA funding.
ARA funding, it's not, it's not the general funding associated with this. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Yamashita?
In speaking with the superintendent just yesterday, he said the reserves are being released, and that's how they're paying for all of these people they're hiring. So, you know, which again is a concern of mine, right? And, and honestly, I think that whole strategy helped them make it to this point, because I think there is no accountability over there and stuff. So I just, I just wanted to share what he shared with me yesterday.
Senator Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to actually share that, that's the statements that I heard also from the superintendent as well. And I, I, I believe he's also made clear the statements that there, I know there's demand to fund Department of Education on these, these levels, but there's also a supply issue. And I don't know if you can confirm that. Supply issue meaning regards to teachers, you know. So there's been an issue of recruitment of teachers. So I guess that we can, that's an issue, maybe you can confirm as well.
Yeah, okay. We got to get out of this chapter. And I've been back to you five times.
No, but I, but I, I, it's just, I'm so sensitive. The editorial today again slammed us about are not taking care of education.
Right.
And I want the public to understand we're trying. In this appropriation of the two nineteen, what is the FTE that, or, or, or do we do that anymore?
Well, the FTEs count that, that these numbers in this bill were based on is two thousand nine hundred and fifty for locally funded positions.
Right.
And then, given the extra four million, that could account for another hundred to a hundred and fifty people, depending on-
Could support that up to, up to an additional-
Depending on what level they come in at.
Okay, okay. Sure.
You know, because I too am really sensitive about this, because when we were there, we had thirty-six thousand students, and our local appropriation was a hundred and forty million. We now have thirty-one thousand students, and granted, we have a few new schools, maybe five. And now we're going to give them two hundred and nineteen million, and we still have the same challenges in front of us. And that greatly disturbs me.
Okay. So that would then conclude our discussion on the DOE chapter? Yeah, or begin our discussion on the DOE chapter? Yeah. And just as a note to, you know, we, we see, we see the improvements, at least on the physical facilities side. And so as Senator Yamashita meant, I was up at Okudu the other day for the dedication of their track. And then taking a conversation, everybody has a new track, except for GW. So we did fund a new track for GW for the repair of the track at GW finally, after so many years. So that's one of the changes that was in this from the One dash S as well as thirty-eight. So I just wanted to state that for the record. No, already happened. They're brand new. Okay. Chapter two, part three, part two, University of Guam. The University of Guam, we had to, will receive a appropriation of twenty-five million from the general fund, one million from the Territorial Educational Facilities Fund, and four million, four hundred and forty-four, seven, five, four from the federal matching grant and aids. The scholarship programs continue to be funded at the same level in, in the governor's request on Bill One dash S, as well as all of the other program funds for Guam Pedia, KPRG, the capital improvement appropriation. The governor had, in One dash S, had taken out the two hundred and fifty thousand from the territorial highway fund for their capital projects that was authorized by statute. We re, reinstated that funding. In addition, we granted relief for debt to the University of Guam in the amount of about two million dollars, two point two. The governor had reduced that in the One dash S funding, reducing the two million, two point two million dollar appropriation. We refilled that back in, in this budget bill. And the others remain consistent with the governor's request. Any questions? Right. So in this budget bill, there's an additional two point two, again, from the debt relief, and the one million from the Territorial Educational Facilities Fund. And again, these are increased funding, which, you know, is timely with regards to the latest report of additional enrollments and programs at the University of Guam. The next section is the Guam Community College. Once again, there, there was a reduction in the Community College Fund that was in One dash S, and we've gone back and refilled that appropriation. So the GCC will have an appropriation of fourteen million, two sixty-one from the general fund for its operations. And then the program funding remains consistent, that's seven hundred and eighty-two, five seventy for the LPN program. The lodging program is consistent with the governor's proposal, two twenty-four thousand, one fifty-four. The apprenticeship programs receives one million, seven, seven, zero, two, oh, three from the Manpower Development Fund and five hundred and twenty-two, two, four, one from the tourist attraction fund. Their federal matching grant and aid will give them an additional one million, sixty-eight, four, sixty-three. And that is the funding level that has been proposed and placed in this budget. Senator Siniklas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I first had a question, and that is concerning the merit bonuses for GCC. I understand that DOE hasn't been paid to nineteen ninety-one, and the judiciary hasn't been paid to nineteen ninety-one. And I'm of the impression, though I'm, I'm pending confirmation, that GCC as well has not paid merit bonuses to nineteen ninety-one. Are we, is that, is that correct?
We received no communication from them to that effect.
I'm, I'm getting verbal confirmation from some of my colleagues, and so I would like to propose an amendment to this particular chapter, adding a new section, excuse me, a new section five. And this new section five would basically be mirror language of the language that's placed with regards to the Department of Education.
Okay.
On page fifteen, line twenty-six through page sixteen, line seven. And if we could just add that as a new section five to GCC, but have the, all references to GDOE be changed out to GCC as well. In the interest, we brought up the merit bonus issue, Mr. Chairman, because we believe that we don't, we don't treat people unfairly in this government. And all of those employees who've received payments to nineteen ninety-one have basically set a standard. And in order for us to treat all of our employees fairly, we need to make sure we match that standard. We didn't open this merit bonus door, but we need to make the commitment to treating everybody fairly. And so in the interest of the Guam Community College and their merit bonuses going back to nineteen ninety-one, I would like to propose that amendment at this time. Mr. Chair?
On that amendment, we will, Senator Uggan, can we just make sure that, did the clerk get that amendment? Yes. We don't need to give it to you in writing? Oh, you, you have it.
I do have some language here, if you'd like.
Oh, okay, so just-
I'll provide to the clerk.
Yes, provide the, so we can get a copy, and the clerk will get a copy as well. Senator Uggan, did I hear your, see your hand on the amendment?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I just would like to stand in, in support of that particular amendment. And as recent as a couple of days back, I did receive confirmation that the only effort, ongoing effort right now is if in fact she receives additional funding is that she will cover, the president of GCC will cover the prior four years within the statute of limitations. But her biggest concern at this point in time is making sure that she's able to meet regular operation requirements for the balance of fiscal year. So right now, that's not really the focus of her priority, it's more or less the regular operations for GCC. But in light of that, I certain, and she, she did highlight that she was not even, she did not have that information readily available in terms of what the cost factor would be going back to nineteen ninety-one. But that, that has yet to be on her list of priorities other than regular operations, and then should funding permit the, within the statute of limitations. I just wanted to clarify that and endorse the amendment. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Uggan. Any other, Senator Yamashita, on the amendment?
Yes, but just really to further emphasize what the previous speaker has said, that I really do appreciate the integrity of the merit award program that President Okada insists that is being done at her college, because she is ensuring that the evaluation system is of integrity, that those who are getting these bonuses are outstanding. And, and I do not believe that's happening at the Department of Education. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Yamashita. Any other questions or comments? Senator Uggan?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. Just one, one side note on this particular issue, the merit bonus, and that was brought to my attention. And this individual that shared it with me is trying to get confirmation from a legal perspective. But should the HAY study be implemented in totality? There is a merit bonus process already incorporated into the HAY study. So we want to make sure that as we move forward, and the event, the eventual implementation, full implementation of the HAY study is, becomes effective, then we certainly need to revisit this whole process and reconcile the two. Because we, you know, although our outstanding and our superior employees are doing an excellent job within the public sector, presenting double bonuses when in fact the government may not be able to afford it is, would be the question. I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Any additions or deletion on the amendment itself? Any objections? No objections? Amendment carries. We are now on the Commission for Educator Certification. This is for the Teacher Certification Program, two oh two, six one seven. No addition or deletion. We're now in Chapter Three, Health, Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. Funding for the hospital is provided through subsidies enacted by the legislature. The Guam Pharmaceutical, or GMHA Pharmaceutical Fund appropriation, this is a percentage of the GRT collections. So the number is nine, three, one, three, oh, five, five, which is the same as the administration. Seventy-five percent of the pharmaceutical fund is earmarked for the Medicaid Matching Fund Program, and that amounts to six million, nine eighty-four, seven ninety-one. And, excuse me, the other twenty-five percent is available to the hospital for what is normally they term their charity care. Section three is the General Fund Appropriations, one million, five twenty-nine, nine five zero, is appropriated for GMH from the General Fund for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen. The Healthy Futures Fund, again by statute, will provide them an additional three million, nine seven seven, four hundred and seventy-eight, and one million additional from the Healthy Futures Fund for GMH for a line of credit that is authorized to them. The appropriations contained in this section is approximately, approximately a million dollars more than what was submitted by the governor in Bill One dash S. So we are, knowing the situation at GMH, have increased the appropriation subsidy to GMH by a million dollars above the request by the administration. Senator Lim Tiako?
Mr. Chair, you know, the, I know that GMH has indicated their concerns with the section two language in line fifteen through eighteen.
Yes.
And their, their concerns was whether or not, you know, they, we could have added language that basically makes them, require them to do it in a certain timeline.
Okay.
You know, as opposed to, you know, they were requesting changes to the language that, that it be such as the earlier of twenty-one days after receipt of said claim or the payment date is required by. Is there any room in which we can, and I think this is an issue regarding whether or not they're getting their, their Medicaid payments on time, and it's forcing a cash crunch with their operations?
What we have done, Senator Lim Tiako, is we created this Medicaid Matching Fund in which, that was a, a new concern that's been brought up. But the concern that they brought up during the public hearing was that they're taking this six point nine eight, giving it to Public Health, and then Public Health is paying other vendors. So we resolved that with creating that matching fund, and then requiring them to process those payments within the quarter. So that if they don't get those payments within the quarter, then it goes directly to the GMH, so that they have access to those funds. So I think we just have to work with DP, Department of Public Health to process those, because the cash should be there. And the reason why we segregated it, so that when they remit the cash, not only- And the reason why we segregated it, so that when they remit the cash, not only do they get the local, but they get the federal matching, so that it almost doubles the cash flow to GMH. And they all have, they all have to do it by quarter. So I think that this may resolve some of those concerns in terms of processing the claims quickly, because if they don't process the claims quickly, they don't get the credit of that at, for Medicaid, it just goes as a direct subsidy to GMH.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
So we were able to work that, I think, in, in this new provision that we have in here. Okay. Any other, Senator Uggan?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just so that there's, there's really a, a good clarification in terms of what resources are being allocated external of GMH. Right now, we're looking at fifteen point seven million dollars coming out of either the Pharmaceutical Fund or the General Fund, going directly to augment the operation requirements at the Guam Memorial Hospital. Now, with the recently enacted GMH Healthcare Trust and Development Fund, is there a particular, regardless as to whether, in fact, we have questions as to how that was implemented, is there a particular anticipated revenue that would be augmenting GMH's operation as a result of that particular, the establishment of that account?
The Director of Revenue and Taxation during discussion on, on Bill thirty-eight had indicated, I think he said nine hundred and twenty thousand a year, but that was like very preliminary. So they, he mentioned that number, and, and then they're still trying to ascertain the additional collections that could occur from the GRT on a monthly basis and the new licensing revenues. But that was the number he had, he had presented to the body of the additional money that will be available to GMH under that initiative.
So out of this budget itself, fifteen point seven million dollars is going?
That's not included in here.
Understood. So out of this budget, fifteen point seven is, is already augmenting GMH's operation requirements, plus a possible one million dollars plus?
And more, depending on when they finally reconcile the implementation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Lim Tiako, did you have your hand up?
Uh, yeah. Mr. Chair, just as a point of clarification, again, going back to section two, the, the remittance of the adjudicated claims for processing for medically indigent program, is that inclusive of the Medicaid claims as well? Or are you referring that the Medicaid claims are now in this specials, like this seventy-five percent fund that you're referring to? Because...
Uh, yes, it is the Medicaid claims.
The Medicaid claims?
Inclusive of the Medicaid.
So it's both of them?
Yes, MIP and Medicaid.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right. No additional questions? Additions or deletions? We're now at the Department of Public Health and Social Services. The appropriation for Department of Public Health and Social Services totals forty-five million five oh nine four five zero. There was an additional increase in this, in the governor's submittal, that included an additional two million dollars for Medicaid, Medicaid Medicare, I, I believe. The appropriation level is consistent with what was in thirty-eight dash thirty-two instead of the one dash thirty, or one dash three S, one three dash S, so, so there's a difference there. It does include the additional funding for the Meals Program, the, not the adult, the Foster Program, and, and those other funding programs that had been previously presented to the legislative body and, and adopted. There is continued carryover for the MIP and Medicaid payments, so that we don't interrupt And then there's the prompt payment of MIP patient claims generated at Guam Memorial Hospital Provision also that you see in, in Section thirteen as well. The Office of Minority Health will be allowed, once again, the hundred thousand for their continued operation, as it's continued to work and reinstate federal grants after a five-year experience level. So, Senator Ada?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, you did mention that the, the Meals Program wasn't, wasn't included on this?
No. It was not, yeah.
It's page thirty-five.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, page thirty-five.
Thirty-five, okay.
Okay.
Section seven, A three.
So the elderly? See that, Senator Ada? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any additions or deletions? If not, we are now on the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. The appropriation level that is being proposed is totals sixteen million seven hundred and twenty thousand one twenty-one, of which Healthy Futures Fund provides three million four eight oh nine one five, and the balance of thirteen two three nine two oh six comes out of the General Fund. The department will also be able to access the FMT Federal Management Team Transition from the amended permanent injunction to control by the Behavioral Health and Wellness Center of the existing balances in their bank account. And so this adds additional resources over and above the sixteen million to the Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. In addition, once again, we continue to provide support for the interpreter services contract so that the department can better serve its clientele. Any additions or deletions? If not, we'll proceed then to the Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with The sum of the appropriation here is one million one one nine four four nine, and the federal matching grant and aid is two nine two six five one. And that is consistent with the administration's funding level request. No additions or deletions? The Unified Judiciary. The appropriation for the Unified Judiciary will receive from the General Fund twenty-three million three four one one eighty-four. No federal matching grant and aids, and no special funds that is appropriated. The, the governor in his submittal for one dash S had reduced the judiciary appropriation and I'll recognize Senator Uggan to, okay, and the, the committee has basically gone back and filled that. He reduced the operations as well as the appropriation for the four-year merit bonus, and we've reinstated that and covered that cost back in to make the judiciary whole. An additional one point four nine million dollars has been restored to the judiciary funding from the governor's original request and subsequent requests in one dash three, or one three dash S. The other appropriations for indigent, or court-appointed attorneys, the Adult Juvenile Court, again, has been reinstated and to the full funding that was requested of nine six seven six five, which is an increase, and the Family Visiting Center continues to receive one forty-six two oh five. Any additions or deletions?
Yes, sir.
Senator Uggan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Just a general comment, so, because in absentia, there was some communication and due consideration on the part of the, the body, and I want to thank you very much as the chair of the Finance Committee for restoring the original request, or the original budgeted request for operations and then also for the Adult Drug Court, because the, the reality is, is that's, that's the minimal requirement for the unified judiciary of Guam. So I just want to thank our colleagues and I thank yourself. Thank you also, Mr. Chairman, for your consideration, consideration with regards to judiciary.
You're welcome, Senator Uggan. That concludes the Chapter Four. Chapter Five is the Executive Branch Appropriation. Section One is the amounts authorized in subsections A through FF are hereby authorized out of the General Fund, Special Fund, Federal Matching Grant and Aid specified for agency, department, and offices in each subsection for its operations for two thousand and fourteen. The Office of Magallay and Guahan receives an appropriation level consistent with exactly what they had requested, so we are providing them six million seven hundred and seventy-six thousand four seventy-eight. And the allocations, you have there for your information, what the object class, the BBM IFY two thirteen, run rate, the executive branch requests, and what is contained in this bill as being allocated for the operations of the Office of Magallay and Guahan, and it is the same as the request, so. Additions or deletions? Commission on Decolonization, Commission on Decolonization receives a minor decrease of about eleven thousand dollars, and that is in the benefits section based upon the calculations of the benefits and the salary levels being given. Additions or deletions? None. The Guam and Central Lands Commission received ninety-eight thousand oh six oh. The original request was one thirty-five one four oh, and that, there was a couple vacancies that they had requested, I think one additional vacancy, but that was, we recommended that, this time, that that be deleted, and that's the basic difference between that. Oh, I'm sorry. Capital Outlay was the twenty thousand dollar decrease. I thought this was the other agency. So that's where the decrease is, basically. No additions or deletions? Veterans Affairs Office, Veterans Affairs Office is receiving full support plus for the office. There was a request that was adopted initially, which we have put back in here, of six hundred nineteen thousand three seventy-nine, which is a doubling of their current appropriation level, and this level was agreed to by the governor as well in his submitted in Bill one dash S. So the veterans will receive additional resources in their office to be able to service and meet their needs, so. Additions or deletions? Senator Uggan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I just would like to publicly recognize not only yourself as the chair and the facilitator of the overall allocation of resources for the Veterans Affairs Office, but also Senator Siniklas and a number of our other colleagues here who have publicly stood up and endorsed the adjustment upward or the doubling of the budget for the Veterans Affairs Office. I think that if, if, in fact, we can reflect just on the last eight months, there's been a good number of our veterans who have questioned the commitment of the government of Guam, not necessarily the legislative body, but the government of Guam, in terms of providing support and resources to our veterans on island, and I certainly hope that this reflects in conjunction with everything else that has been passed in terms of legislation in the last several years, that our veterans will recognize that certainly their service has, is, is not only appreciated, but is recognized, and, and this would help support and reinforce some of their ongoing efforts. So thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Uggan. And I just, one minor correction. I want to put Senator Siniklas' efforts in front of mine on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Thank you very much. The Bureau of Budget Management Research, I'm sorry, Mr. Vice Speaker on the veterans, could you?
Not veterans, I, just, just going back on, on the executive direction.
Sure.
Um, is that lump sum, or is that category?
The, that is a lump sum appropriation with the requirement that thirty days after the budget is passed, that they bring us back an allocation schedule, much like we have in the budget bill, that would then categorize that lump sum into those object categories. So that's, that's the, the current, that's the current budget as well, and so they would come back to us with that allocation of the object class thirty days after the budget is passed.
And, and just, just so it's clear, that on page nine of the governor's budget, the number that you're, you're providing for him is exactly the same number.
That is correct.
I just wanted to make that clear, that the number that's provided in this is the exact same number that's in one S.
Yes. Yes, that is correct. And we even, and that is even restoring the two hundred thousand that the voluntary gave up for drug court in one dash S. So we're making him whole. Bureau of Budget Management Research, the alloc, the appropriation is one million two hundred and ten thousand eight oh six for the operations, nine hundred and forty-one thousand from the General Fund, and four nine nine, and two sixty-nine three oh seven from an indirect cost fund. This is a, a little bit lower than the executive request, and the major difference is, once again, in the benefits category. As we recalculate the benefits, we, we are able to see, to see a reduction in that based on the recalculation, and that's really where your major difference is in terms of the Additions or deletions? None. Civil Service Commission is appropriated eight thirty-seven two oh five for their operations, and that is an increase of about twenty thousand dollars from the executive request. Additions or deletions? None. Department of Administration? The Department of Administration will receive from the General Fund eight million oh seven three four ninety-six, the indirect cost fund of one three, one three one three one fifty-nine for a total of the nine million three eighty-six six fifty-five. Again, the allocation is an increase of about three hundred, four hundred thousand, and that's basically in the, no, it's, it's in their salaries and, and pay, is, we've increased that. That, that comes from the increase for the increments partly, that was not funded in the original BB, uh, request by the administration, so. Additions or deletions? None. It also, the appropriation also includes additional, over and above the nine million of support for child in custody of six forty-nine nine sixty-two, and residential treatment fund of one million one hundred thousand. The Government Claims Fund receives a hundred thousand, and then the audit pass-throughs for supervision of the audits, the three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, the Tourist Attraction Fund audit at eighteen thousand, and the Highway Fund at eighteen thousand, and then thirty thousand for training programs out of the indirect cost fund. These numbers are all the same and consistent with the administration's request. Additions or deletions? Department of Revenue and Taxation will receive ten million six thirty-eight three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The administration had requested approximately, or requested eleven million eight one four two six two. The FY fourteen allocation is ten million six thirty-eight three seventy-five. Six hundred thousand of that difference is for the triennial valuation, which we are already funding with another appropriation. So that's the major accounting for the difference between the executive request and what is allocated in here. And again, this is an allocation, so the governor can transfer money into revenue tax as he sees fit. In addition, we also provided their point-of-sale system appropriation, so if you add the six hundred thousand plus the point-of-sale appropriation, it then just about equals from what was the original request. Additional deletions? Bureau of Statistics and Plans will receive an appropriation from the General Fund, one million one three four two forty-three, and this is just the, a couple of, about ten thousand, or nine, little over ten thousand over and above the executive branch request. No additions or deletions? Department of Public Works? Department of Public Works will receive nineteen million nine sixty-four eight seventy-three, eleven million two thirty-five three three seven coming from the General Fund. The DPW Building and Design Fund will provide five hundred and seventy-nine oh one nine, and the Guam Highway Fund will provide eight million one thirty-two five one seven. The total allocation for the department is nineteen million nine sixty-four eight seventy-three, and the executive request had been at eighteen million... seventy-three, and the executive request had been at eighteen million, seven oh two, three fifty-seven. So there was an increase here. This is though from the original January request, right? Yeah. Right. And it's, so it's very consistent with the governor's request under one dash S, in terms of the funding levels for, for DPW. Additions or deletions? And then, of course, the TGen Parkway is an additional appropriation to DPW of one point three million dollars for the TGen Parkway. And the fleet and fuel management monitoring system will receive an appropriation, an allocation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That will help them manage the DPW fleet. Additional deletion? None. We shall then proceed to the Guam Contractors Licensing Board. The Guam Contractors Licensing Board received six twenty-four, oh six two. What was in one S? Oh, the, the request had been for eight sixty-six, seven sixty-two, and the allocate, their current expenditure rate is five seventy, and we're providing an allocation of six twenty-four, oh six two. This fund will have a surplus at the end of the year, and it is one of those funds where they can access that surplus as they go through the year. So the allocation really is not that restrictive because they can access those funds by statute. Additional deletion? The Guam Building Code Council will receive one hundred and five thousand dollars for its operations. The Guam Board of Registration for Professional Engineers, Architects, and Land Surveyors will receive a appropriation level of one seventy-nine, eight, two seven. And again, the executive request had been to just spend all the money that was collected and projected to be collected, and what we allocated was their, basically, their present funding level plus their request, and if they need to access that, this is another one of those funds in which they're able to access the surplus pursuant to statutes. Additions or deletions? Guam Police Department, the Guam Police Department will receive twenty-eight million, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven seven two, federal matching grant and aid of six six five, six oh nine, and for a total allocation of twenty-eight, five eighty-three, seven seven two, which is above the original executive request of twenty-seven million, five one six, five four oh. In addition, there is a Guam police training cycle that will be funded to the tune of eight hundred thousand, and the cost-sharing initiative related to the criminal justice information system, the GPD will provide the cost of running that program at the judiciary of forty thousand, oh eighty-two. Mr. Vice Speaker.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to thank you as the oversight for public safety that, to note that you did provide, or the committee provided, a one million dollar increase from the executive request, and thank you for the police cycle also. I just wanted to make sure that it's clear that we're trying with what meager resources we have in government to address public safety. And I wanted to point out that million dollar increase from the executive and the eight hundred thousand that you're providing for a new cycle.
And that was from the original request. Just wanted to make sure. Department of Corrections, the Department of Corrections will receive twenty million, six oh nine, seven seven seven, the general fund providing nineteen million, two one six, one one hundred, and the Corrections，在mating revolving fund will receive, will provide, one million, two ninety-seven, six seventy-eight. Safe Streets Fund will provide ninety-six thousand dollars. This is pretty much in line with the administration's request. There was a reduction from the one dash S number, and basically that reduction was due to the fact that the, had requested about eight hundred thousand for payment of prior year obligations by the Department of Corrections to GMH, and the governor had already ordered that the prior year obligations be paid out of the two percent reserve in this fiscal year. And the, in his executive order, he says, "The directive of administration to pay amounts owed to Guam Memorial Hospital," and the GMH in turn is ordered to pay employees for increments earned during the period of the increment freeze. So he ordered the prior obligations to be paid, and GMH paid increments with those rather than their operations. But that's the difference in the one dash S number versus this number here, is the prior year obligation number. Senator Ogden?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just a quick question, because obviously Department of Corrections, we're dealing with part of our law enforcement community. I noticed that the subitem number twelve is zeroed out in the fiscal year fourteen allocation for, under drug testing. So is there flexibility within this budget whereby Department of Corrections may utilize, let's say contractual services allocation, to be able to take care of the drug testing? Because certainly, when we're dealing with law enforcement and we want to ensure that, that the individuals are randomly tested when necessary, deemed necessary, then certainly that has to come into the equation.
For those departments and agencies whose recruitment and, and personnel are managed by the Department of Administration, there's a drug testing budget in the Department of Administration, and so they pay for the drug testing of those under the executive branch. So while, it doesn't show here because that number or that amount and that cost is in the Department of Administration budget.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for the clarification.
And then the care and cost of care and custody for prisoners confined in federal facilities will have six hundred and ninety-six thousand, and once again, DOC participates in the, in the criminal justice information systems and will be charged forty thousand, oh eight two, for their cost of running that system at the judiciary. Additions or deletions? None. Department of Agriculture, Department of Agriculture will receive two million, six seven one, seven six, six, and eight hundred, oh, eighty-five thousand, eight three nine of that will be coming out of the Guam Plant Inspection and Permit Fund. Federal matching grant and aid will provide two hundred and eighty-eight, five hundred So the allocation schedule is very close to what the original executive branch request has been, and I believe, though, it is agriculture. And so, but it is a little bit less than what was in one dash S as well, about a hundred thousand less. Animal Shelter is shown to receive ninety-four thousand, nine five five. This is for the animal shelter in Gigo that is presently run by a gain. Additional deletion? The Guam Public Library System, Guam Public Library System will receive one million, one fifty-seven, eight forty-nine, and the request is about fifty, sixty thousand less than the administration's request, and that comes out of their power allocation, basically, and their benefit schedule. Additions or deletions? Department of Youth Affairs, Department of Youth Affairs will receive four million, four ninety-eight, two hundred thousand, and this is the same number as what was requested by the Department of, by the executive branch, is the exact same amount as requested. And this also includes funding for some of the vacancies for youth service workers, as we had in the original budget of thirty-eight dash thirty-two as well. So additions or deletions? The youth service, or the youth program will receive three hundred and twenty-one thousand, five five six, and this is an additional appropriation and not part of their operating budget. So this is to fund programs that are contracted out for services to youths who are runaways, homeless, and victims of abuse. Guam Environmental Protection Agency received appropriation six eighty-two, eight hundred, coming out of the Air Pollution Control Fund, the Guam Environmental Trust Fund, Water Protection Fund, and the Water Research and Development Fund. And this is a slight increase. Including the pass-throughs for the beach monitoring and the closure of the island's landfill, just a little bit over the original request for, for this department. Additional deletions? Department of Labor, Department of Labor will receive one million, two sixty-seven, five sixty-two, of which nine fifty, nine one five, five forty-two is coming out of the general fund and the Manpower Development Fund. Their portion, based upon allocation, is three fifty-one, nine seven nine. Federal matching grant and aids will provide forty-three, eight hundred. Yeah. The, there is a decrease here from the administration's request, and the major decrease is in personnel from the vacancies that they have not been, not been filling in their past fiscal year. Additions or deletions? Workers' Compensation will receive seventy-nine, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five ninety-three, and this is the same amount as the administration's request. Department of Parks and Recreation, General Fund, two million, nine one eight, eight forty-two, Public Recreation Services Fund, one eighty-seven, oh two eight, for a total of three million, one oh five, eight seven zero. And that's a decrease of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the request, and that comes in their contractual, contractual service account. They also receive funding from the tourist attraction fund over and above their general fund and manpower development funding. From the tourist attraction fund, for the maintenance and repair of public bathrooms, they will receive four hundred thousand, one sixty-six, and for the maintenance of public pool facilities, once again, coming on the tourist attraction fund, they will receive three hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars. Senator Morrison, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I would like to make an adjustment to, to give some flexibility to the department, and, and just with the language, Mr. Chair. I, I think it'd be best if, if that we pursued in deleting or striking Section Five, and, and basically including the language that will read on Section Four, that maintenance and repair of public parks and recreation facilities, that'll be the title of Section Four. And it goes on further to read the sum of four hundred, or, or seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars is appropriate from the tourist attraction fund to DPR for the maintenance and repair of public parks and recreation facilities islandwide. So basically, Mr. Chair, we're basically striking Section Five, taking that amount, lumping it in, and this way it will give the department a little flexibility in case they could also do other repairs to the facilities within the parks. I, I spoke with the director and the parks administrator as well, and actually it'd probably give them some incentives to see if they could actually bring the cost down on these contracts, and also if they would maybe avail them to do other repairs to the parks. So this is in discussion also with the department, Mr. Chair.
All right. Senator Morrison, may I ask you, I, I know you read it out. I'll allow the discussion to, to continue, but I want to make sure we get it in writing so that the clerk can make sure it reflects the intention that you have. So if we could just work with the clerks and maybe your legal counsel to just make sure that that's, it's written down. I do have then on the amendment by Senator Morrison, I saw Senators Nicholas' hands first, and, but can I defer to the chair of TAF? Yes. All right. So Senator Munia Barnes, and then Senators Nicholas.
Thank you, Senators Nicholas, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity to share some concerns and oppose this amendment. I just want to say the, the three hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred lever that was, was proffered from the tourist attraction fund was, is to be utilized for the Northern Pool and the Hagania Pool. As you know, when this pool was built, there was a collaboration with, with the municipal planning council of Dedido, Mayor Sabares, Parks and Recs, and TAF, in reference to supporting the efforts and bringing that attraction to the northern villages. And, and this, this amount that was provided for both the Hagania and northern pools was to make sure that we maintain and upkeep these, these pool facilities, and if that fund wasn't allocated their way, then, then they would close down that, those pools. You and I know that we do have a lot of folks in the community who use these pools as, not just as a stress relief, but as part of their physical fitness and, and staying in health, staying in, in, in good health, and, and I just think that taking this away from that will be, will have a detrimental effect to the programs that exist there today. I know I don't have oversight of DPR, Mr. Speaker, but I, I want to share as part of working closely with the tourist attraction fund and working with the, with the folks at GBB. I think that this, this funding source was greatly needed for these programs that are here today. So I, I'm going to have to not just have reservations on this, Mr. Chair, but share my objection to that amendment.
Thank you very much, Senator Munia Barnes. And just for the record, there's an objection to the amendment. Senators Nicholas on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can see the intention of the profferer of the amendment who wants to provide more flexibility. My concern is, you know, these two areas, these target areas are high need, high risk I was at the Hagania Pool not too long ago, and it was just in terrible shape, the restroom facilities, the locker room facilities. If you just go there, I, I took pictures, if anybody would like to see, it is just a horror. I can't, I can't think of any other way to put it. And, and what's sad is that, you know, not only do our, our schoolchildren use that facility, and our Olympians, but we also have visitors from off-island who come here for swimming competitions, from Japan, from northern Mariana Islands, from the Philippines. I remember I was there for a, a special competition, and when I walked into that locker room facility, I was just embarrassed that we had people from around the, around the world there and seeing that. And, and the same goes for our public restrooms. I, I think everybody in our community knows of the state of our public restrooms, especially in our, our park facilities. And, you know, I can see where the, the intention is in order to give the flexibility, but my concern is that the money will go to replacing chain link versus fixing a toilet, you know, or to replacing a coat of paint versus putting a door up on a restroom stall. I mean, it's that bad up at the Hagania Pool. It's that bad in a lot of our public park restroom facilities. And so... And so, I, I, I agree that we do need to provide as much support as possible to DPR in order for them to accomplish their mission of bringing these things up to a standard that we can all be proud of. I actually think it's going to require more money, and I look forward to working with the Chair of GBB so that we can possibly identify additional, additional funds from the Tourist Attraction Fund to maybe even beef this up to some targeted improvements. But at this time, I would also like to object to the amendment and keep these two things separate for now, just to emphasize the priority. And I would like to work with the proffer of the amendment and the Chair of GBB and, and yourself, Mr. Chairman, as Chair of Parks and Rec, to figure out where we can find additional resources to bring everything else up to speed. But I would, I would prefer that we, we keep these funds targeted in these particular areas, and I actually, after we satisfied the amendment from the good Senator, I would also like to proffer an additional one, one that's included.
We'll dispose of the amendment, and then I'll come back to you for an amendment.
Thank you.
Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Speaker Ben. As you know, many of us share concerns about Parks and Recreation, and I know that you've introduced a measure to try to give them back some authority over some monies that they collect as people pay to use our Parks and Recreation facilities. Mr. Speaker, I actually support this amendment. I believe that the leadership of Parks and Recreation fully knows what needs to happen. When you've talked to these, these folks who have struggled with many vacancies, they're very serious about their mission and about getting their work done. I think they would know very well what needs to happen, how it needs to happen, and I think this amendment will really give them some leverage. How can they get the best deals to oversee some facility issues? And they know it's not just the Hagania Pool or the Northern Pool, but there's other areas, and they perhaps can, as the move of this amendment is trying to do, how can we let them leverage those resources in the best effort? So I do support this amendment. Thank you.
Senator Spiesha.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I understand the opposition that was raised to the amendment. I want to say that what we're attempting to do here is trying to provide a budget that the, that the executive branch can use that recognizes some kind of flexibility in terms of what the, what the overall appropriations are and how these monies are to be expended. In this instance, we have two separate appropriations, one for the public restrooms, and then the other for the pool facilities, which, which outlines four hundred thousand for one and three hundred and forty-nine thousand for the other. But if in the event the pool facilities require a little bit more money than the public restroom facilities, then the Parks and Recreation Director will be faced with, with the challenge of deciding, you know, what the priorities are. And given how the administration has had a fifteen percent reserve on these funds, I, I just don't, I mean, I, I, I agree with the move of the amendment. I don't want to hamstring the executive branch. I'm wondering, Mr. Speaker, if we can, if we can somehow move toward a direction of supporting the amendment by identifying the overall appropriation, but making it some, some way clearer in the language that, that of the amounts, five, four hundred thousand is for the public restrooms and three hundred and forty-nine thousand is for the pool facilities, but that the Director is authorized to allocate such sums as are necessary to accomplish this particular provision. So, so that we have the best of both instances, one to give them flexibility, but the other to try to, to tie them as close as possible to these two items.
Thank you.
So either, can we take a recess?
Sure. We'll take a short one-minute recess. No other speakers on your amendment, so I'll come back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to redraw my amendment, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right. Under the motion to, by the, and request by the author to withdraw his amendment, no objections. Amendment passes. We are now then in Department of Land Management. Department of Land Management will receive from the Lands, Department of Land Management's Land Survey Revolving Fund, a appropriation of three million one forty-five eight forty-five, and from the General Fund, three fifty-eight, three seventy-five. The executive branch request was for three million six oh two two seventy-eight, which is a difference of about seventy-one thousand dollars in the allocation schedule. Any additions or deletions? Office of the Chief Medical Examiner, four hundred and fourteen thousand oh oh nine, which is about a thousand dollar difference from the administration's request, and that is in the increment schedule for the department. No additions or deletions? Department of Customs and Quarantine. Customs and Quarantine will receive an appropriation of thirteen million five forty-eight eight forty-five, which is coming from the Customs, Agriculture, and Quarantine Inspection Services Fund for FY two thousand and fourteen. And this is the exact same amount as was requested by the administration. The increase from the previous year is due to the increase in their fee schedule from the Port Authority, sea customs fees at the Port Authority of Guam. This is not inclusive of the additional revenue that will accrue to the Customs and Quarantine Agency from the recently enacted passengers' facilities charge, so it's not included in that. That's correct. No additions or deletions? Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Speaker Cruz, I'm sorry.
I, I just wanted to point out the fact that in BBMR and FY thirteen only requested six million for office rent, and now we're up to three two. Was that because we, we allowed them to, to move money to, to cover that in the previous fiscal year?
That's right. In the previous fiscal year, the rent was paid out of, was not budgeted, budgeted basically. It was just taken off the top of the collections by the Airport Authority, which then left the operations of Customs short, which was covered by the General Fund. So this year, with the increase in the collections, we are actually reflecting the true cost of running that by reflecting the rent in their budget allocation, or their budget.
I'm, I'm not going to make amendment, Mr. Speaker. I just wanted to put on the record that I object to the rent.
Okay. Oh, yes. I understand. Yeah, just a technical amendment on lines eleven and twelve. That number should be the same as the number in line six. So it should read thirteen five four eight eight four five instead of thirteen five eight four. as the number in line six. So it should read 13,548,845 instead of 13,584,845, okay? There's just a transposition there. Yes, I am. I don't know why I'm the Budget Chairman, but I am dyslexic on numbers. Senator Ogden and Senator Siniklas.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Just to, I guess, reemphasize or add on to the conversation that Vice Speaker just mentioned with regards to rental, I think that it needs to be emphasized that over the course of just the last three fiscal years, the average General Fund augmentation or support to Customs and Quarantine was in the neighborhood of about $2.7 million, 2.4 to 2.7 million, just in the last three fiscal years. So the adjustment from of 636 to 829, the purpose behind that particular adjustment, based on the overall presentation and also to the airlines, and the airlines did endorse that adjustment in the per-passenger fee at the airport, was to allow for the recruitment of 20, this fiscal year, 20 additional customs officers recruits for the subsequent fiscal year, fiscal year 14, half a million dollars investment in the baggage area where Customs provides that additional security before they enter, our people enter back into our island community, and then also to upgrade some of their computerized equipment in the neighborhood of about $100, $150,000. So that's where the adjustment, the resources of the additional adjustment is going in terms of the per-passenger fee at the airport of 636 up to 829. And that was originally scheduled, Mr. Speaker, just for the information of the body, originally scheduled to be effective or to be implemented as of August 1st, but there was a little bit of a hiccup, and that timeline was pushed back an additional 30 to 60 days, only because they wanted to provide the airlines with that additional notification so that in fact they can incorporate it into their fee structure. So in this regard, this appropriation is very appropriate. I think that I need to echo though the concern, the indirect concern that Vice Speaker Cruz was perhaps moving down the road off, and that's why do we as a government entity continue to provide or pay rent to another government of Guam entity that provides a critical law enforcement responsibility or service to our community? And that's really the underlying issue, and the good chairman of the airport was calling it for a roundtable discussion, which was subsequently canceled or postponed primarily because of some legislative activities. I believe it was a session that was called, but I think that this is an issue that certainly we need to continue to explore in the future. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Ogden. Senator Siniklas, did I see your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Similar to the Vice Speaker and the Chairman of Customs, the rent question is just something that I'm really trying to reconcile in my mind because I understand there is a passenger facility charge, and that amount is supposed to offset the cost of Customs basically operating up at the airport. And so if that truly is an offset, where is that offset going? Is it going to salaries? Are there, is there people hired under a different funding stream that's going end around, not hitting this budget? Or does the $6 million here that we have for salaries, is that inclusive of the recapture of passenger facility charges to offset that rent expense? I'm trying to, I still haven't gotten comfortable in really understanding how that passenger facility charge is offsetting the rental expense. Where is it going exactly?
Mr. Oversight Chair, did you want to respond?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much, Senator Siniklas, for that inquiry. What it is, is like I mentioned a little earlier, because Customs, most of their operations are located up at the facility, at the airport facility, rent was being assessed and taken right off the top in terms of the overall collections. Now, the adjustment from 636 to 829 would only apply to the use of the airport facility. So rather than taking off the top approximately 2.4, 2.7 million annually for rent, now the adjustment would allow the sufficient revenues to capture the rent, to allow for the recruitment of 20 who are already on board, 20 new recruits for Customs this fiscal year, 20 for the next fiscal year, and then allow the additional investments that I highlighted a little earlier, which is going to be half a million dollars for the baggage claim area, and then another $100, $150,000 to upgrade some of their computerized equipment. So if you're looking, we're looking at the upcoming fiscal year, that's where the additional revenues would be applied in terms of offsetting. So the direct offset would be now rather than General Fund augmenting the 2.4, 2.7 million dollars of rent, it's going to come directly from the adjustment in the fees and taken off the top.
So the passenger facility charges are coming back in then to the Customs and Quarantine Agency, and we're hiring and we're buying capital equipment for them?
And paying for rent.
Okay.
With no additional support from the General Fund.
And those monies then are reflected here in the budget, or that's new money that's going to be coming in that's not reflected here?
According to the chairman, the adjustment is not incorporated in here, so that being the case.
Yes, according to BBMR, this $13 million in revenue from the Customs Agriculture and Quarantine Inspection Services Fund does not include the additional revenue from the increase in the passenger facilities charge.
And that's where the additional revenue should go. So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker, I think that in this particular case, any anticipated expenditure beyond 13.5 would really have to come back to this body for appropriation.
Yes, that's correct.
So that may address part of your concern in terms of where those additional revenues are going.
Okay, so in the interim then, Mr. Chair, as that money comes in, where does it get parked?
It'll be parked in this special fund.
Into this particular special fund?
But the appropriation authority is only up to 13 million.
Okay, so basically then we can anticipate that whatever that passenger facility charge offset is to this rent expense is going to be an additional amount available for appropriation
That's correct.
This fiscal year for Customs.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
And their plan for that is the additional officers and the capital projects.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Additions or deletions? Department of Chumoral Affairs will be funded from the General Fund, 945,564, which is about a $15,000 difference from the request by the administration, a little lower. So additions or deletions? Senator Cruz, Mr. Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have had inquiries from the President of the Department of Chumoral Affairs about his responsibility over about three or four agencies. I think he's got PBS, Kaha, and is there a way to be able, how does one address his compensation? Is there a way of being able to combine them to, or giving the governor the authority to increase his salary without us?
Yeah, I don't think that that would be, it's not a legislatively set salary, so if the governor can convince the boards of those agencies, then I'm sure that they can make those, make that adjustment without the need for legislative action.
I just wanted that on the record so that he can hear it and those boards can hear it, because then they know that they're the ones that are holding it up.
Just make sure you don't include all the compensation for the points of contact because there's like 15 there. Okay? No additions or deletions? Department of Military Affairs, this is the local funding for the National Guard program, $682,842 is appropriated for the General Fund, and they have a federal matching fund of $1,609,985. Very minor difference from the, on the local side, from the governor's request. Council of Arts and Humanities, they receive General Fund appropriation of $307,500, and this is only part of their operating budget. They also receive federal, direct federal funding, I think is about the same amount, but that's not reflected in the, yeah, in this budget here. So they are receiving the exact same amount as requested by the administration. Additions or deletions? Territorial Ban will receive from the Tourist Attraction Fund that goes to Kaha, passed through Kaha for the territorial ban in the amount of $400,000, $40,000. The Guam Fire Department? The Guam Fire Department will receive from the General Fund, $27,613,540. The Enhanced 911 Emergency Reporting System Fund, $1,658,883, and from the Flame Fund, $318,742, for a total appropriation of $29,591,165. The allocation is about a $722 difference from the request by, $722,000 difference from the request by the administration. But I also want to note that the funding for the fire department had received and, or was also subject to the governor's 15% reserve, which is about a $3.9 million reserve that there, that has not been made available to fire as of this date. So the funding is over and above, the difference is way below, about 30% below what has been reserved voluntarily or mandatorily by the governor. So we're not really shortchanging them based upon the reserve that's been withheld from their operations this year. Additions or deletions? The Guam Educational Telecommunications Corporation will receive $653,600 with no federal matching, which is a slight increase of about $36,848 from the administration's request. Additions or deletions? Chumor Land Trust, Chumor Land Trust is funded out of the Chumor Land Trust Operations Fund, and their operations budget for this year is $551,580. This is about a $500,000 difference from what the administration had requested. What we, as the Oversight Chair, we looked at what their operating expense is and what the governor had proposed, the additional $500,000 was basically some computer equipment, and what we had discussed was reserving the additional above their operation for funding for the development of the SUTA program, which is the substantially underserved areas for the development of infrastructure into the Chumor Land Trust program. So that's the difference. The operational budget is the same as the administration's operational budget, but the surplus in the collection will go towards infrastructure development to leverage matching grants and low-interest loans instead of some capital expenditure at the trust. Additions or deletions? The Guam Regional Transit Authority is funded out of the Guam Highway Fund. The appropriation is $3,388,388,789. Just a technical amendment on line three, the first, should read eight instead of 80. So it's $388,789. Yes? Yes, Chumor Land Trust?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you, Mr. Chair, if I may. I do apologize, but you did bring up the SUTA and the acknowledgement there, and I'm looking at the breakdown. You said you were going to put any surplus into what category?
It's unappropriated in this time.
Okay.
Yeah, it stays in the fund.
So, so where, it's, where is that stated?
It's just, it's just a balance, a positive balance in the trust fund itself. It's not allocated to anything.
It's not, it's not allocated here, but...
But the intent is that that surplus will go towards participation in the SUTA program for support for that program rather than capital expenditure. So it's just a positive balance in the fund.
Okay. Senator Manci.
So additions or deletions to the regional transit? This number is derived from a formula set in statute on the collections of the Guam Highway Fund. The Guam Election Commission will receive $950,781. This is an additional $200,000 from what was requested by the administration for the operations, and this is to help them in planning for the primary election in the next, in this fiscal year, next September, which is part of this fiscal year. Additions or deletions? None? Guam Solid Waste Authority, we will receive from the Solid Waste Operations Fund for its operations, $7,659,090, and this number is basically derived and given to the administration, which then submitted them to us from the district court receiver. And so CNC is currently in charge of the operations. We also added, from the legislator's side, a request to fund a Solid Waste Authority Board that has been put in place. They had requested some allocation for some operational funding. This was not part of the request by the administration, but we decided to respond to the Solid Waste Authority Board's request and provided $100,000 for their operations. Addition or deletions? None? The legislative branch, the legislative branch will receive an appropriation of $7,446,635 from the General Fund, and to the Office of Finance and Budget will receive $378,737. Any motion to add or add? None? We'll go past that. Legal Services, the Office of the Attorney General. The Office of the Attorney General will receive an appropriation of $11,817,793. This was an increase over their initial request, in which the administration also recognized the need to fund, and so this is the same as what was requested in 1-S, but this is, but the original increase to the Attorney General funding request was given by the Office of Finance and Budget and the Committee on Appropriations in Bill 38-32. Federal matching grant and aid will provide $4,950,000. The Attorney General, being in a duly elected office, also receives transfer authority. The Family Violence Registry Database will continue to require the Attorney General to provide funds necessary for the implementation of that registry. Allocation to fund vacancies from the increase of $317,665 for a, the Prosecution Division for two Assistant Attorney Generals, two paralegals, two Legislative Secretaries, one and one investigator, and $211,000 of that will be for salaries. In addition, $105,786 is allocated also for Object Class 113. In addition, the increase in the Attorney General's office that was provided will also fund the Victims Witness Adjudice Services Program to the amount of $75,466, and this is for hiring two additional victim advocate positions. This is the legislative's response to the cry for the victims for additional resources to help them initiate and protect their rights during the prosecution as well as the sentencing processes of the family violence and violent crime initiatives of the Attorney General. The allocation to the Attorney General's office for their use of the Criminal Justice Information System will be $40,082.
Mr. Chair, what was the dollar increase amount to the Attorney General's office from what was originally requested?
From the original request is about 3... Let me, we got to go back to the original. It is the same, though, as what the governor also sent down in 1-3S, but we increased it from the original budget bill. But then when we introduced the bill, we had that increase from their request, and then when that bill was vetoed, the governor sent down 1S, it was the same amount as 38-32.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Legal Services, the Public Legal Services, the Public Defender Service Corporation will receive three million, six-six-one, five-twenty-two, um, of which, three, three million, three-three-six, six thirty-one shall be for personnel, uh, Object Class one-one-one, one to one-fifteen. The Public Defender Service Corporation also receives transfer authority and an appropriation of thirty-five thousand, three fifty-four for their merit bonus for the, um, the four years, not the ninety-one. Senator Ogden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, there was a, uh, amendment very similar to what was proffered a little earlier with regards to GCC, and it was passed out to all of our colleagues. I'd like to ask you all for your, for consideration in regards to this. It would add a new subsection four, and it would highlight that once the chief executives identifies any additional resources, that it'd be, that information be provided to the speaker and to yourself so that this legislature can address the outstanding balance. Just for the information of the body here, uh, the figure that was presented to members of this legislature is that the required amount, all the way back to nineteen ninety-one, to make the merit bonus whole with Public Defender Service Corporation, is in the, in the range of about a hundred-and-thirty-four, a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars, inclusive of what's allocated here, the thirty-five thousand. So that's the figure that we're talking about in terms of, uh, not only addressing the thirty-five thousand that the, within the statute of limitation, but this provision is, is very similar in nature, and it would hopefully, uh, that allow the chief executive to identify additional resources so that we can make the employees of Public Set Service, Public Defender Service Corporation whole. So I ask for all of our colleagues' consideration, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
On the amendment by Senator Ogden?
No objections.
Amendment carries. No additional, um, additions or deletions to Chapter Seven. Chapter Eight, the Mayor's Council of Guam, the Mayor's Council of Guam will receive an appropriation of eight million, oh-three-three, six hundred dollars for Personnel Services for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, and the sum is composed of seven million, two-six-seven, five-eighty-seven from the General Fund and seven-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, oh-one-three from the Guam Highway Fund. The Street Maintenance and Beautification, uh, Fund is a fund provided to the Mayor's Council of Guam for, from the Tourist Attraction Fund, um, and that is over and above the eight million. Then, uh, the allocation is based on the decision of the Mayor's Council of Guam of twenty thousand dollars, and then the remaining balance distributed to all the mayors on a pro-rata basis for roadway maintenance. The Islandwide Beautification Project receives four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, nine-seventy-one in additional appropriation from the Tourist Attraction Fund for the Mayor's Council of Guam's Islandwide Beautification Pro- Projects. The Ground Maintenance for the Schools will receive four-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand, oh-nine-three, uh, for the schools listed herein, and, uh, we continue to carry forward the requirements that the mayors can consolidate schools, uh, in their agreement. Public Safety and Social Education Program will receive four-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand, eight sixty, and that comes to the general, from the General Fund for the mayors, in which fifteen thousand is given to each of the mayor's offices. The Authorization to Make Prior Obligation Payments from their two-thousand appropriation. The Host Community Premium for Oda Chalampago and Inarahan, uh, for the, uh, hosting of the, uh, landfill, uh, both the new and the soon-to-be-closed Oda landfill receives three-hundred-thousand, divided equally between the two. Lump Sum Payment Reimbursement to the mayors from their current year's operations budget is eight forty-nine, two-two-four, and the continuing appropriation, uh, for the mayors is also allowed for them under Section Nine. This is the same amount as the executive branch request in Bill Number One, Three-Dash-S. Additions or deletions? None. Appropriation then is carried forward. Chapter Ten or Nine is the Public Accountability and Standards Practices. This is the Office of Public Accountability, one-two, one million, two fifty-four, three-twenty-seven. This is the same as the request by the administration, uh, in the recently submitted, uh, budget bill as well. Additions or deletions? None. Uh, the Guam Board of Accountancy receives four-hundred-and-twenty-six, six-zero-zero. This is for the operations of the CPA Licensing Board and CPA Testing Programs for both off-island and off-island applicants, and this is the same as the administration's request. The Guam Visitors Bureau, appropriation amount totals for operations, fifteen million, four eighty-seven, one thirty-four, of which, uh, comprised of, uh, allocations for marketing, general administration, marketing, printing, promotion, research, and destination development. In addition, the, uh, appropriation to the GBB for special projects receives two million dollars, uh, and that is for two Monogania Beach Cleaning, Landscaping, and other projects listed in Section Two. The Pa Taotao Tunnel, uh, will receive eighty thousand dollars from the TAF. Uh, the Historic Inalahan Foundation will receive twenty-five thousand. The Pacific War Museum, fifty thousand. The Tourism Education Council is funded by TAF at, to the tune of thirty thousand. The Hadza Cultural Preservation Foundation receives fifteen thousand in support. Appropriation for the Micronesian Cruise Association, fifty thousand. Appropriation to the Guam International Film Festival Program, fifty thousand. Festpac and Folk Life Festival Trust Fund will receive two-hundred thousand. Appropriation to the Rainy Day Fund, two-hundred thousand. Appropriation to the Humatak Foundation receives fifty thousand. The Amut Taotao Tunnel Farm will receive twenty-five thousand, and the forensic audit of the Hotel Occupancy Tax will receive fifty thousand dollars. In addition, there are reporting requirements for all of these, uh, uh, nonprofit organizations and entity, and other entities receiving support, uh, for, uh, their expenditures of the funds. Authority to Transfer is given to the GBB Board of Directors, uh, in the appropriations contained in Section One, basically their operations. Um, the creation of the Hotel Occupancy Tax Surplus Fund, uh, is outlined in Section Seventeen. Any additions or deletions? If not, we shall move to miscellaneous...
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
If I may, I'd like to motion for recess. I, I know we're under the last chapter, but being that the time is, uh, five o'clock, and we do have, uh, um, the hearing that we recalled, that we were asked to attend up at the hospital, and that, in that way, if there's, there's anything that we can do for the hospital before we pass the miscellaneous appropriations that, you know, we'll be able to come back to this section again and...
You want to come back after the hearing at JMH?
Uh, Mr., Mr. Chair, if that's what the will of the body is, that's fine, but...
No. Motion to take a one-minute recess. On that motion, there's an, there's an objection to the motion. All in favor of the recess, please raise your hand. Motion fails. We'll continue then working. Uh, Chapter Nine is the Miscellaneous Appropriation. So, the appropriation in, uh, Section One is the Government Reappropriation for Employee and Enhancement Development. This is a section that was added that, um, basically what this does is that if the, um, if the governor shall decide to, uh, move in the direction of an exclusive contract for, for, uh, health insurance, then the savings of the health insurance, um, will go towards the implementation of the HAY program and the payment of the merit bonuses back to ninety-one. Uh, and again, the current budget fun, fully funds health insurance at the current rate. So, uh, what this does is, if there's a change in the direction that we move, uh, from the, uh, full funding of health insurance to the exclusive funding of health insurance, then the savings will go towards those, uh, um, two initiatives of fully funding HAY and the, uh, judiciary, uh, bonuses for merit, uh, and the Guam DOE. Additions or deletions? The Governor of Guam Competitive Wage Act, this is the request by the administration for the, um, implementation of the HAY. The, uh, amount that is provided is eight million, four-hundred-nineteen-thousand, seven-forty-seven, and this is the same amount as what has been requested by the administration. Um, the, um, section here outlines the percentages of the HAY classification if it was implemented to the eight forty, eight-point-four-million-dollar level that goes to those agencies and departments that are covered under the executive branch and the uniform, uh, pay plan. And so the implementation will be across the board, uh, and will be funded, uh, based on the costs for classified personnel and unclassified personnel. The governor shall submit to the legislature the adoption of the, uh, HAY program on how he wants to implement it and who he wants to implement, uh, who he, who he wants it to cover, whether it shall be classified personnel only or unclassified personnel as well. And so this outlines then the submission of that process and the allocation of the funds for the implementation of the HAY program. It also then restricts this fund from the governor's transfer authority. Any additions or deletions? Senator Limtiak?
Mr. Chair, um, if we could, uh, get clarification on, uh, Item E.
Okay.
Um, if, if I understand it correctly, the, um, as it reads here, "The implementation of salary increases due from said plan shall be effective January first, twenty-fourteen, upon passage of legislative resolution amending and/or approving the plan." Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, can, can we do this via resolution? Wouldn't it require legislation?
Um, this...
I, I don't believe that we can, and I'd like to amend that language where we strike out the use of a legislative resolution and insert the language "legislation."
The amendment would be legislative...
It, the amendment would read on line twenty-four...
Right.
And I, I have the, here for the, the clerks.
Clerk?
Um, it would be striking of the language "a legislative resolution" and inserting the word "legislation."
Okay. And I would carry throughout the section where resolution is...
Yes, if, if there's any technical amendments, if it can be, uh, amended as well.
Okay. On that amendment?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Speaker?
Before we vote on the amendment, maybe I could just, um, generate, uh, some discussion. I think what we're attempting to do here is to recognize the separate but co-equal branches of government, and to say that if the governor wants to do this, he submits the plan to the legislature, January fifteen, uh, to the speaker, and so, and so it's not one person or one office acting unilaterally. It requires that the plan be effective upon passage of a legislative resolution. If we qua- require that a bill be passed, then, then a public hearing would have to take place on, on that bill, and then we would have to pass it in our regular session or special session, whatever the case may be, and then we have to present that to the governor again for his signature. And so what if in the beginning of this process, the governor, who has, if we want to say he has fifty percent authority and we have fifty percent authority, so in the beginning of the process, the governor says, "I, I want to do this, we have the funds to do it, and I'm advising the legislature," and then if we do this by legislation, we're yielding probably twenty-five percent back to him because, because we're going to have to do it by legislation if the amendment passes, which ultimately requires the governor's, um, uh, action, whether he signs it or vetoes it, and so, so for those reasons, I oppose the amendment, uh, especially if we want to get this, um, thing implemented after the governor tells us it's doable.
Okay. Any additional, anybody else on the amendment?
Mr. Chair, um, wouldn't a substantive resolution require a public hearing as well?
Yes, according to the standing rules.
So it would, it would still, they would still both require a public hearing, right?
According to the standing rules, I would believe so.
Yeah.
Okay. Speaker Wompa?
I, I have a question. Is the intent then that if it comes down from the governor's office, that the governor has decided to amend it one way or the other, that then it becomes either an automatic approval with a resolution, whereas if it was a, in a bill form, then that means, wouldn't we... Whereas, if it was in a bill form, then that means, wouldn't we then would have to amend it by either adding additional amounts of money, whatever? I mean, what would the real intent be here, having this language? Is it just to basically kind of accept what the governor's plan is, but it's just for review by the legislature? So, it's a pass-through? I mean, that's what I'm trying to figure out then, whether, I mean, I understand the force of legislation versus a resolution, but the intent of what it is that we want to hear from, from the governor? Whether the plan would say, "This is where I'm getting the money. This is how much it's going to be. This is the adjustment in which I want it to, to happen." And then, it's just a acceptance or notification to the legislature? Can, I don't know what the, the real intent here is, and maybe that could generate the discussion, whether it be through legislation or through a resolution.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I have Mr. Vice Speaker.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just wondering why we even want to have anything to do with it once it's done. We've already reduced the amount from what we know is the amount that is needed to implement the entire plan. We're giving him back the number that he said he wanted in his one S. Let him implement it, and he has to suffer the consequences. Why do we need to get back into it? We're, we're giving him his own number back. But if we have to approve it either by resolution or by legislation, then we are reassuming responsibility for it. But if we give him the amount of money that he says he wants to implement the hay, then whatever he does, it's, it's on him. That's, that's his, not ours. I'd like to wash our hands of it and just appropriate the money that he wants. He can't complain that we're giving him more than he, than is, is fiscally responsible. And then, just say, "All right, do it. All we're asking you is to make sure the judiciary gets six point four percent or whatever, and DOE gets a certain amount, and it's not just the executive agencies. But we want everybody to get their share, and they'll implement, you guys implement it. But this is how much you wanted, and this is how much you said you wanted, and leave it to him."
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker.
Mr. Chair, could we call for a five-minute recess? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend the initial amendment that I had made. And basically, what the language will read is upon passage, or excuse me, after the, on line twenty-three, we would strike out the word, starting from upon passage. Through approving the plan. And we shall insert the following language. Shall, shall take effect. Shall take effect within thirty days unless the legislature acts on it.
Is that sufficient?
And if we need to make the technical amendments too. Well, I believe the effective date will remain the same, right?
Yeah.
I mean, the effective date, January first, twenty fourteen, will remain.
Make it thirty, because some, some of the triple A's forty-five. So, thirty days.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Legal counsel, is that sufficient? Okay. On the amendment by Senator Limtiaco, no objections. Amendment carries. We're now on the appropriations for retirees supplemental annuity. Okay. And if I could, Senator Barnes, what we would do also, just to reflect then the change in Senator Limtiaco's amendment. Can we just move that we delete this all the way down here? Senator Barnes?
Yes. Mr. Speaker, if I may, just to follow along the lines of Senator Limtiaco's amendment on page one forty-one. Line five. As required in section, right?
Yes.
To delete?
Yes.
As required in subsection E of this section, all the way down to line eleven, after the word use, period, delete up to there.
Yeah, just delete that as well. And so, it would be just based on the governor's submission, and then whatever action the legislature decides to take after that. Okay? No objections? Amendment carries?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion at this time to recess. There is a hearing, and I know that this was discussed earlier. I had to step out for an emergency, but I was able to get back. The hospital hearing, and I understand in one of these sections, there may be a proposed amendment to find some additional funding for the hospital possibly in miscellaneous. So, I'd like to move it this time for recess.
On the motion to recess, there's an objection to the motion to recess. I'd like to call for the Senator Agon.
Just on the motion, Mr. Speaker, perhaps what can, what we can do is, I understand that there's an intent of a number of members of the body to be able to attend that hearing. Perhaps we can have, with your concurrence and consideration, the flexibility to be able to revert back only on, on this particular section, as it may apply to GMH. So, at least, we can continue the deliberation on this measure and perhaps conclude in a short while, but then allow for that flexibility to be able to come back if, in fact, anyone wants to proffer an amendment. So, I just wanted to share that because certainly, if, in fact, GMH is in dire need of additional resources that they can identify, and that may be readily available with your concurrence and your consideration, then certainly, we should be open to trying to provide additional support. Just, just a thought. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. There was an objection to the motion to recess. All in favor of the recess, please raise your right hand. There's a motion to recess. Can I get to a time certain, like seven-thirty? Okay.
So, move, Mr. Speaker.
All right. So, on the motion to recess until seven-thirty, that motion, again, receives eight votes, I assume? Okay. This committee or the whole will recess until seven-thirty PM. Back in session. When we broke earlier, we were on the miscellaneous appropriation section. In section three is the appropriations for retirees and supplemental annuities. Before that, I just wanted to read out the amendment that was offered by Senator Limtiaco. And the amendment reads, "The final implementation plan to adjust compensation classification of benefits shall be submitted by Magallanes Gohan to the Speaker of Legislature no later than January fifteen, two thousand and fourteen. The implementation of salary increases due from the plan shall be effective thirty calendar days after receipt of the plan by the Speaker of Legislature unless disapproved or amended. The legislature may approve, disapprove, or amend plan prior to effective date to ensure its implementation fairly inconsistent with appropriated funds." Senator Limtiaco?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I just want, I had just a further thing, but did you want to dispense with the amendment first?
Yes. Actually, this was the adopted amendment. This was the language that was worked out by counsel. Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, just on that, regarding the same section, I wanted to ask OFMB if we can just go through the ramifications of, of this section as it pertains to twenty fifteen, and then again in twenty seventeen. We, we had an opportunity to present the, the debt service that's going to be due.
Right.
And the, my concern is the, the language regarding the section one of chapter eleven is, what are the effects of these implementations going forward? For example, I, I know that it specifically outlines in section two D that the, the percentage of, of these funds that are going to go through each of these, each of these.
Entities.
United, unified judiciary, GDOE, UOG. What, what, the question that I have for OFMB is, when twenty fifteen comes, and, and these are implemented in, in some form or fashion in twenty fourteen, what is the implication in twenty fifteen?
It gets added to the base payroll.
Right, so, and, and once it is implemented, then we're, we're just carrying that forward, right? Now, it, do, is it carried forward in the, the level of implementation that exists? Or are, is by the implementation of it, is it going to be implemented a hundred percent or required to be implemented a hundred percent in twenty fifteen?
No. The way that this is written, it's up to the governor. And it, it'll be to the level that the governor requests it to be implemented. So, if the governor requests that it only be implemented fifty percent in the following year, unless there's another request to implement it to seventy-five percent, it'll remain at that fifty percent in the following fiscal year.
Right, and, and the, the references to the GDOE merit bonuses and the unified judiciary merit bonuses as well? Do we have that quantified? I know we address it in certain sections, but I, are these referings to the merit bonuses going back to ninety-one? And, and do we have that number quantified?
Section one?
Yes.
The only information that I have is the same information that was shared when we went through the first budget, which I believe is somewhere in the neighborhood of six point five million. So, it's being reported for the Department of Education. Correctly.
Yeah. Department of Education estimates that the merit bonus back to ninety-one is about six million, little over six. The judiciary estimate, estimated, and they said those are not firm numbers, but four point five. Public Defender Service Corporation estimates about a hundred and thirty-five thousand. So, those are the numbers for the merit bonus liability, as we call them, now given the payment to all the other agencies.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to voice my concerns, you know, with the, with the looming debt service in twenty fifteen and then again in, in twenty seventeen, the additional seven million. You know, I, I just want to voice my concerns that, you know, the, the twenty fourteen seems to, to balance, but, you know, we're committing ourselves to it, and, and it's going to have ramifications into the future. And I'm not sure we have the, the organic growth and the revenue stream to support it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and I want to share and echo those same concerns on my part, Senator Limtiaco. Supplemental annuity, section three, this is the forty-two thirty-eight. This, the appropriation is for nine million six hundred and sixty thousand for the departments and agencies. The autonomous agencies cover their own supplemental annuity. This number is based upon submission of the current payouts by the Guafguan Retirement Fund for this benefit. And it, you'll see that this, this is reducing, is reducing every year, because this is frozen. And so, as the defined benefit, unfortunately, defined benefit recipients pass away, this number gets reduced by the forty-two thirty-eight if there are no survivors, or halved if there are survivors. And the, from pages one forty-one to one forty-six, one forty-seven, all of those are the various statutes that add up to the forty-two thirty-eight supplemental annuity. The, section seven is the appropriation for the cost of living allowance. Oh, I'm sorry. Section G of the, on page one forty-three is the Medicare reimbursement program. This is two million oh nine nine, four hundred, four hundred dollars is appropriated from the general fund to pay for the Medicare premiums, inclusive of premiums for Medicare Part B and D for the Guafguan retirees and their survivors domiciled in Guam and who are eligible to pay to receive social security income benefits. This, this reimbursement helps the government of Guam save money by transitioning the retirees who are eligible for Medicare from the Guafguan program, which is a much more expensive premium to the Medicare supplemental program. So, this actually reduces our health insurance costs for retirees by reimbursing the retirees for their Medicare supplement payments. So, that's, that's how this section works. Section H is the pension program for the Magallahi, Segunda Magallahidsani. Section H is the pension program for the Magallahi, Segunda Magallahidsani, Segundo Magallahis, 251,000 for their pension, 358,000 from the general fund for retirement annuities for former judges and justices of the Superior Court and Supreme Court of Guam. The Board of Trustees shall enact, and if necessary, and men administrative regulations that establish procedures to employ the, to ensure the proper submission, receipt, and accounting of all sums remitted in subsections two F and two G. Section four is the survivor supplemental annuity. Again, this is the 4238 statutes that make the survivors eligible for the supplemental annuity benefit. Disability supplemental annuity as well, when those retirees retire on disability, they also get the supplemental annuity. And again, that adds up to the 4238 number. And then the retirees supplemental annuity additions ensures that it is for fiscal year 2014, beginning October 2013 to September 2014. And again, these are the 4238. Additions or deletions? None. Appropriation for cost of living COLA allowance, the sum of 1,800 is for each retiree of the Guavguan program who retired as of September 30, 2013, or his survivor, paid out no later than November 1, 2013. The sum is 11,665,580, and the, 800. The Port Authority, again, the autonomous agencies, pay for their own supplemental, I mean COLA, and each agency mentioned in subsection six B shall reimburse the general fund for any COLAs paid by the fund in fiscal year 2014 to retirees who have retired from that agency and their survivors no later than December 31, 2013. And any retiree eligible to receive COLA may waive their payment authorized herein by filing an authorized affidavit waiving such payment with the entity responsible for the retirement fund. If the retiree is both a defined benefit and a defined contribution retiree, his, her, or his survivor shall only be entitled to a single COLA payment. Senator Lim Tiaco on this section?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, just for the freshman senators or anybody else, I guess, listening, could you please advise us as the reason why the current COLA was, is at 1,100, as opposed to the original 1,800?
The COLA, I think, if I remember, had peaked at about 2,200 in the past years. And when the financial crisis hit, and there were concerns with regards to the financial stability of the government of Guam, various legislatures throughout the years have tried to solve those problems of the financial problems within the departments and agencies, and providing them resources. So various legislatures, to help balance the budget, basically chose to cut the COLA retirees' annual COLA payment. And it went from 22, I think 100 was the peak, if I remember correctly. Then it got reduced to 18. I think it had been down to another level before it finally hit 1,100. And it stayed there since 2008, if I recall. And there's always been requests by retirees, can you, you know, we're fixed income, everything's going up, our supplemental annuity does not increase, the 4238's fixed, but the COLA has been cut, and there is no index on their regular pension. So their regular pension, once they retire, also gets frozen unless they're at the very bottom end, which then brings them up to a level, and then after that level of over 14,000, no additional increase on the regular pension. So once they retire, they really have no other additional income and no additional resources, other than the COLA that has been able to fluctuate. And rather than going up to keep up with inflation, when we've had financial problems in the government of Guam, we've cut them, instead of the other departments and agencies, and cut them more. And so, that's how it came down to 1,100. It's been over several legislatures that it has been reduced from a peak of 22 to 11.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, Mr. Chair, I know our retirees deserve this money, but once again, I just want to voice my concerns with the pending debt service in fiscal year 2015, and then an additional 11 million in 2015, and then an additional 7 million in 2017. It, I do not want to make the same mistakes that led to the reduction in the COLA, down to 1,100, that it is now. So, you know, I would like to get OFMB's opinion as to whether or not we're going to be able to sustain it in 2015, and whether or not we're going to be able to sustain it in 2017, because the last thing we'd want to do is take it away from them again. And, you know, the prior history has shown that that has been the case. As you alluded to, it was up to 2,200 at one point, and it was cut in half, down to, or close to it, down to 1,100. And so, my concern is, not whether it balances in 2014, but what are the ramifications for the future? And whether or not we're going to have to be in the same boat that we're in today, but instead of going upward, we're going backward. And that's a disservice to the retirees, as well as every single taxpayer on the island. So if you could just comment on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So you're asking exactly?
The ramifications of increasing the COLA, obviously, are going to proceed into the future. And the question is, in 2015 and in 2017, when the debt balloons to 11 million, the debt service balloons to another 11 million, and then on top of that, another 7 million in 2017, whether or not this is sustainable?
Well, the increase for the COLA this year, I believe, is about 4.5 million. So it would depend on if that was in the budget next year, as well, at the increased level. So it's been in, it's been in the past five budgets, to my recollection, and prior, at about the level of 6.5 to 7 million. So this is the first year it's been increased in the last five years. So if that was to carry over to next year, then it would have an impact of that much less towards, that you could use towards debt service.
Okay, so with the additional 4 million, and then the 8.9 from the hay, and then with the 11 million in debt service, we're looking at close to 23 million that we need to find, either via organic growth or some kind of boom to the economy, that's going to help us cover that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Senator Sinicless?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I see where Senator Lim Tiaco is coming from, in terms of the sustainability, and I also would like to make sure that we have a COLA that's sustainable. That's why I was really hoping we could override our original bill. It was 7 million less than spending. The reason why we are now entering an even more unsustainable arena is because we're trying to compromise the governor, who wants to increase his spending at a level that is higher than what the legislature was originally proposing in the bill that got vetoed and failed to get overridden. So, I guess, I would like to ask if you can comment on whether or not the COLA would be more sustainable if we were using the previous budget as opposed to this budget?
Yes, I believe so. You know, because there's 7 million less pressure on other operations increases, so everything's going to be under pressure, I think, in the upcoming fiscal year with the increase in debt service, and even in the adoption of some of the revenue numbers in here. But if we had the other budget, it would be more sustainable.
And so I'd just like to clarify, then, for the record, that the reason why we are entering even more unsustainable territory with this COLA, is because we've been put into this position of needing to compromise with a higher spending budget that the governor wants to have passed.
Section seven, addition or deletion? None. Section eight, reimbursement to the Capital District Fund, 431,000 from the general fund to the legislature for the reimbursement for the funds to the Capital District Fund. Additions or deletions? None. Guam Community Police Review Commission, this is also part of the governor's submission in one dash S. The Guam Police Review Commission has been impaneled, they finally have appointments to those to serve, and they're in the process of setting it up, and have requested an appropriation for their operations. Addition or deletions? None. Retiree medical, dental, life... I'm sorry. Senator Ogden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Just a quick question, the Guam Community Police Review Commission, isn't that the administrative support being provided by the Guam Police Department?
Yes, but they also, because of these, not, they're, they kind of provide scheduling and things like that, but they need their own staff for...
Okay, the only reason why I ask that is because if there's a direct link, in terms of administrative support, and providing space and whatnot, shouldn't 150,000, under this same statement, be under the appropriation of the Guam Police Department?
No, we want it to be, go to the Police Review Commission, this will be set up through DOA.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Retiree, section 10, retiree medical, dental, or life insurance expenses. For the Guavguan Retirement Fund, section A is 17,622,584 appropriated from the general fund, and 3,371,990 is appropriated from the section 2718 fund to Guavguan Retirement Fund to pay for retiree group health and medical, retiree group medical insurance premium. 961,000 is appropriated from the Retirement Fund, from the general fund to the Retirement Fund to pay for group dental health insurance premium, and 1,94562 from the general fund to the Guavguan Retirement Fund for life insurance subsidy to continue existing programs. Senator Ogden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, Mrs. Chairman. I do have a proposed amendment that was circulated a little earlier, prior to the recess. And, Mr. Speaker, there's an issue that has surfaced in regards to the funding mechanism for the retirees for medical, dental, and life insurance. And the question, right now, that has yet to be, I guess, resolved, is the question whether judiciary retirees are included in the overall appropriation to the Guavguan Retirement Fund for these particular services. And, my understanding of how the budget process has always worked in the past, is that, yes, all Guavguan retirees are, this particular appropriation amount of 17.6 plus the other figures that you had just shared with us, was inclusive, or has been inclusive, of judiciary retirees. So I do have a proposed amendment, please, Mr. Speaker and our colleagues. It was circulated just prior to the break, and it would insert, after the word premiums on line 21, subsection A, to read, comma, including premiums and coverage for judiciary Guam retirees, comma, that would be in subsection A, and then likewise, that same provision or statement will be incorporated into subsection B and subsection C, so they would be applicable to, or it would be inclusive of judiciary retirees. So, Mr. Speaker, I ask for consideration by yourself and our colleagues. Thank you.
On the amendment by Senator Ogden, Senator Lim Tiaco, and then Senator Rodriguez.
Mr. Chair, just as a point of clarification, do we know what the additional premiums would be for the judiciary of Guam?
Mr. Rodriguez?
Are those going to be, is the current amount that's appropriated sufficient to cover those?
It is, they are included in that amount.
They've always been.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alright. Any other, Senator Rodriguez? Yes?
Yes, when the executive budget request was submitted, it included funding very close to that number, which, at the time, there was no discussion about judiciary separating and retirees not being included. So, I mean, they've been included for the last five years, in the last several budgets.
Yes. Correct.
Yes, the retirees, with the exception of those listed in the miscellaneous provisions, the autonomous agencies are all covered under the Retirement Fund appropriation.
No, on the amendment, no objections? Amendment carries. If I could just indulge, in subsection seven, oh, section seven, the COLA, there was a technical amendment on subsection C. It should be every agency mentioned in subsection, it says subsection six B, it actually is subsection seven B, and that's the autonomous agency. So, I just want to go back and request maybe Senator Barnes to make that technical amendment on line 22, page 147. 147, line 22, it should read subsection seven B, instead of what it says there at subsection six.
Right, line 22, section C, each agency mentioned in subsection seven B shall reimburse.
On that amendment, no objections? We are, section 10, we've done. Section 11? Section 11 is the public streetlight appropriations. Subsection A, special fund appropriations, 3,608,212 from the streetlight fund. Appropriation in section one is for the Department of Administration to pay Guam Power Authority for the operation of public streetlights in fiscal year 2014. And B is the sum of 4,210,63 from the Guam Highway Fund appropriation in subsection one, is authorized for the Department of Administration to pay Guam Power Authority. And there's an amendment from Senator Barnes?
Si, Jesus mase, Mr. Speaker, if I may, I guess, just for semantics, make an amendment to that, and just say, on section 11, on the public streetlights appropriation, subsections A and B, I'd like to make an amendment, and if I can just read it out?
Yes.
It says special fund appropriations, the sum of 3,608,212, and then, it's numeric form, in parentheses, then delete, from the streetlight fund appropriation in section one is authorized, and then put in the new underscored line, is appropriated from the streetlight fund to the Department of Administration to pay Guam Power Authority for the operation of public streetlights in fiscal year 2014. And then in sub item B, the sum of 4,210,663 is, again, appropriated from the Guam Highway Fund to the Department of Administration to pay the Guam Power Authority for the operation of public streetlights in fiscal year 2014. So in sub item B, I will delete from, after the enclosed parentheses of the numeric numbers, from the Guam Highway Fund appropriation, and this section is authorized.
Okay. The amendment basically would reflect that it's a direct appropriation out of the streetlight fund. Senator Ogden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I certainly support the amendment, because it's an appropriation rather than authorization, and I thank the good senator for sponsoring it and clarifying that. I guess my question is, so the total cost of the existing or the anticipated cost for public streetlights throughout the entire island community now is at a level of 7.8 billion? Because I know a few years back, it was at 4.7, 4.8, so it's, just in the recent years, it's escalated to 7.8?
Yes.
Wow, thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
On the amendment, no objections? Amendment carries. We're now in the miscellaneous provision. Section one is retirement option for Guavguan employees. This is a language that's carried over from previous budgets. They may retire upon the complete remittance of his outstanding individual contributions to the fund, including employer and employee contribution. This was in response to a freeze on retirement of those departments and agencies who had not remitted the full contribution to the retirement fund from the agency, but the retire, this would allow, that as long as the employer or employee and employer contribution is made for the individual employee, that individual employee is allowed to retire, rather than keeping him hostage, until all the other contributions are made. Additional deletions? None. Section two is, again, language from carryover from previous budgets, temporary employment of retired corrections officers, allowing them to basically double dip while they're in there to relieve officers for long-term sick leave or annual leave for those under deployment, so they can be hired at the corrections officer supervisor one and below, and at step one. Section, additional deletions? Senator Ogden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Just a quick question, it'll be interesting to note, because I don't see any reporting requirement... to note, because I don't see any reporting requirement incorporated in here, if in fact, these particular provisions have been very helpful over the course of the past several years. I mean, obviously, we still have over six, or approximately 600 of our men and women, of which a good number of them are in law enforcement, where these provisions would be very supportive in the operations. But is there a reporting mechanism where these head of the agencies would report to the legislature as to how many individuals have been brought on board as a result of this, these particular provisions, so that at least we can track it and see how it's benefiting the respective agencies?
No, we do not have any reporting requirements on these provisions.
Then, on that note, if it's not too much to ask on, from yourself, Mr. Chair, and members of the body, I'd like to request that legal counsel be given the opportunity to be able to prepare language that would require at least an annual reporting to the legislature and to the chief executive in terms of how these provisions are benefiting our community.
On all of the temporary?
That's correct, Mr. Speaker, because it's, it applies to each government of Guam agency. So, it would be under section two, section three. Section two with Department of Corrections, section three, obviously, Guam Police Department, and then section four, Guam Fire Department, and then Customs and Quarantine. It would be very good information to know.
Okay. All right. The amendment being offered by Senator Uggan is to require a report on where these temporary employment of retired police department firefighters, customs, and quarantine. No objection? And section six as well. All the temporary employment authorizations just require reports on those. So, section three is the retired police officers. Again, this allows for the backfilling of these positions. Senator Muni Barnes?
Mr. Chair, if I may, and I know there, that section three will give the opportunity for retired Guam police officers to take over the temporary positions for those personnel that are either deployed or out for critical issues. But I, I do know that the good vice speaker had been talking to members of the Guam Police Department in reference to its recruits, or those new officer, I mean, those officers or students that have been, that have gone through training for police officers, Juan Belaya and all that stuff, and they have graduated from GCC. And I just wanted to know, would, would GPD have to hire these employees first, or give the opportunity for the new recruits that have completed training through our Guam Community College, or through the other certification programs that GPD holds, based on, on, on these, on this provision?
Uh, there's no requirement that they hire Belaya graduates or any others before these positions. DOA runs a continuous announcements of these vacancies, when they announce the vacancies, and then they fill those with regular applicants. And only for, when they don't have available regular applicants, I think, can they kick this in. So, that, that would be my reading of the statute here, as well as the process for filling vacant positions. These are for temporary vacancies, only for deployment and long-term sick leave. So, only when those are, are left, do they, are they able to, to either backfill them with temporary, with police officers. And the reason they do that is because they're already trained. They don't have to be retrained. They don't have to go through the police cycle and so forth.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Section four is the same provision for firefighters. Section five, same provision for retired customs and quarantine officers. No additions or deletions. Section six, temporary employment of retired Department of Revenue and Taxation employees for the tax collection, tax assistance, tax investigation, auditing, and tax processing provisions. Additions or deletions? None. Section seven is the Guo Guam Health Insurance Enrollment for Employment, but they, they shall only enroll as active employees. And again, this is just to save the government of Guam some money, because the active employee rate for health insurance is lower than the retiree rate. Okay. Section eight is long locum tenens exemption during the absence of the chief of medical examiner. This allows temporary fill for, when the chief medical examiner is off island, since we only have one. Additions or deletions? None. Section nine is advanced payments for medical services. Again, this allows us to advance pay for MIP clients for facilities in California, Hawaii, or Manila, for medical treatment approved by MIP by the Director of Public Health and Social Services. May make advanced payments for medical treatment, and may establish escrow accounts for immediate and advanced payment. Sometimes, they're not able to accept MIP and Medicaid programs from Guam, so they require advanced payment, and we don't want to deny critical Medicare services for our MIP patients. Section 10 is additions or deletions? None. Section 10, transfer employees. Again, this was discussed in previous budgets, and it outlines when and where and among which departments and agencies can employees be transferred. None between the branches, and no transfers for employees as retaliation for filing whistleblower complaints or any other filing grievance with Civil Service Commission, unless, of course, the employees consent to those transfers.
Yeah. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Senator?
Yeah. This time, I, I would, given the fact that we just came from a meeting at the hospital, and, and this section, actually, there, there may be an issue here with regard to the crisis that they were discussing on their presentation. There talked about draconian measures. They talked about a lot of different issues they're dealing with. And I would, I would pose now that we take a recess at this point, in order to deal with the possible ramifications of what they've indicated with this budget going forward, and what their needs will be. And that was presented to at least 10 of us senators who were up there. And so, I move for recess at this point, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chairman.
On the transfer of employees, you want to make an amendment on the transfer of employees?
I'm not gonna make an amendment at this point. No, not to make an amendment, Mr. Chair, but we've hit that point now where we're dealing with these medical professionals, and we, we have to ascertain what the possible impact, because what they have discussed when we were at that meeting is possible reduction in hours, all kinds of different issues related to, and so I just think it's irresponsible for us to move at this point to finish the budget until we can figure out what the possible implications of, of that discussion that we had up there at the hospital might be, Mr. Chair.
Senator Cruz, I recognize you on that motion to recess.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was one that had voted to go to the hospital. I was the one that everybody blamed for bringing up the idea that it was necessary to go to the hospital, because I canceled my oversight hearing. And I went to that overs, to that meeting tonight. They admitted that they had no idea we were coming, but more importantly, they mentioned, admitted that they've been working with Adaloupe, and Adaloupe knew what their situation was. And this budget addresses everything that the governor had in one, three S, and so there is no need to stop at this point. If the governor wanted to say something, he should have said something in his special session bill that he sent to us last week, because he's been in discussions with them. And he's not real, thought that there's, there's a major issue. And so, let's just move forward, Mr. Chairman. I, I thank you guys for allowing me to vote with the, with the minority to go over there, because I thought that it was imperative that we find out. And when we went over there, yes, they, they have some needs, but they, they also have to start addressing their own collection. And I really, you know, I'm, I would try to save them, but at this point, it, it isn't necessary.
Okay. There's an objection to the motion for recess. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the recess, please raise your right hand. Motion fails. Section 10, addition or deletions? None. Section 11, restrictions of hiring of unclassified employees. Additions or deletions? These allows temporary employment or unclassified employment for certain positions within the government of Guam. Section 12, board and commission stipends, compensation. Senator Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I wanted to ask and get clarification first, if this would also, this would also be for the PUC commissioners? If we don't want to exempt them here, like we're exempting the commission of, of civil service, then they would be subject to the same 250? So, I'm just asking for that clarification. For members that are 10 years or more?
No. The PUC board is set up by a separate statute, and their, their compensation is set up by a separate statute. So, it would not cover the PUC members.
Okay. So, we don't need to exclude them here, too?
Exclude them, no.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Additions or deletions? None. Section 13, contracts, positions in the classified and unclassified servants shall not be filled pursuant to contractual arrangements, except for those as provided in this subsection. Additions or deletions? None. Section 17, this is the amendment to... Oh, I'm sorry. I, when I flipped, I, I flipped a couple, double page. Section 14, wireless communication restrictions. Again, these are carryforward languages from previous budgets. No additions or deletions. Section 15, program recording requirements for employment placement and job training programs at the Guam Community College, University of Guam, and the Guam Department of Labor, requiring reports to be filed with the governor and lieutenant governor for the placements of these employment programs. Additions or deletions? Section 16, authorization for legal services for the Department of Public Works, Guam Building Code Council, and Appeals Board. Allows these three entities to share, cost share the services of an attorney general to provide legal services to them. Additions or deletions? None. Section 17 is the amendment to 26,208.2, chapter 26, which sets up the Guam Memorial Hospital Pharmaceuticals Fund. And this, again, sets up the fund so that the pharmaceutical fund is dedicated to payment to hospital bills, and separates that fund at the Department of Public Health and Social Services. And I have Senator Limtiaco, did you have a comment on?
Yes, Mr. Chair. In reviewing this with, with the, the various agencies, you know, there was an amendment I'd like to make. On line 15, ending at hospital, there should be, there would be a period, and then the following language from line 16 through 22 should be deleted?
16 to 22.
Right. So, we'll maintain the, the, the first section of the, of section 17, up to, on line 15, ending at program at the hospital, and then after that, end to billings through line 22, deleted?
And the effect of that would be?
There's a contention, Mr. Chair, with the hospital, that what we're asking them to do here is, is extremely difficult for them to do, and, and whether or not the benefit to the time spent on doing it is, is going to result in anything to effectuate. I, I believe that the first section of section 17 accomplishes what, what I think is intended to be accomplished.
Okay. But I would like, if, if you're gonna do that, I think we need to keep that 75% shall be deposited into the GMH Medicaid matching fund. That, I think, we need to keep, because that's what transfers the money that allows them to match and, and bring over the federal matching. So, I, you can delete the others, but I would request that you consider leaving the requirement to deposit that pharmaceutical fund into the matching fund. That ensures that the hospital gets it.
So, then, so then, by, then we'll, we'll amend it to up to matching fund on line 18, and then the hospital through line, line 22, deleted?
Yeah, that's fine. So, the amendment then would be delete from line 18, the hospital to line 22, Elisa Turanguahan.
Correct.
All right. On the motion to delete, no objections, so forth?
Just a clarification, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Limtiaco, let me ask a question then. Are we still deleting and after hospital?
No, we can, we can, we can leave that, leave that up to line 18.
Okay. All right. So, the amendment that was passed is as I read it, and that is the deletion from 18 to 22 after ma, after fund. Right. Yeah, the beginning with the hospital. Section 18 is the creation of the matching fund that allows then the money to be transferred into that fund, and then remitted payments, and authorizing only payments to GMH out of that fund. Okay. Section 19, approval of financial agreements or arrangements. This just allows any financial arrangements not originally authorized in enabling statute, that if there's using those authorizations, any additional financial arrangements just needs to be also submitted to the legislature for approval, as we do the bond issues. Budgetary amendments to Public Law 31, 233. Section one appropriations to, is to amend chapter 11 of Public Law 3123, and that is appropriations to the supplemental annuity. If you recall, I had mentioned that the supplemental annuity has been reduced, been reducing, and the payment that is required for FY 2013 is at 9,970,0418. The original appropriation was 11,696,303. So, there was a difference of 1,725,85. And we are reducing that appropriation, and appropriating then to, and, under A, and subsection B would reduce the appropriation for, or increase the appropriation for the supplemental, or the Medicare reimbursement. There was a shortage of 157,000 in that appropriation level, because more are participating in the supplemental program. So, the savings of the 1725 would be then applied to the increase in the Medicare reimbursement, and for the payment of the JFK maintenance and insurance for FY 2014 of 1,568,000. And then, up to the sum of 225,027 of the unexpendable balance of the funds appropriated to the public assistance penalty fee. Oh, that's a new section, I'm sorry. So...
Same section. We're just amending the budget.
Oh, okay. And section 14 amends the budget, so that up to the sum of 225,027 of the unexpendable balance of the funds appropriated to the Department of Public Health, public assistance penalty for fiscal year 2013 shall not lapse, and shall be available to the department's public assistance penalty for expenditures in 2014. So, those are the changes to the FY 2013 budget that allows us to pay for additional Medicare supplemental reimbursements, the JFK maintenance, and allowing public health to carry forward that balance for their use in 2014. Additions or deletions? None. Section 27 is the creation of the building revolving fund. This was the fund created at the Department of Public Works for the DPW building and design fee. There was a requirement that all funds need to be appropriated from there. There was a subsequent amendment to the law that made it a revolving fund, which required, allowed them to spend the money, but there was surplus prior to the creation of the revolving fund, and they needed to change the statute so that those surplus can be carried forward and just placed in the revolving fund and available to the department. That's correct. Yeah. Addition or deletion? Section 22, continuing appropriations authorized. This is language that allows for the continuing appropriations of general fund and special funds as authorized in this act to the departments and agencies receiving appropriation. funds as authorized in this act to the departments and agencies receiving appropriations from said special fund and general fund. Additions or deletions, none? Section twenty-three, the, all matters related to the Pacific Community formerly known as South Pacific Commission will now be under the purview of the Office of the Governor versus the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, I believe, in the prior legislation. No addition or deletion. Section twenty-four, upon enactment of this act, the law enacted by the passage of Public Laws one seventy-four dash thirty-two is repealed. This just makes sure that we don't have double appropriation for health insurance as covered in this. Senator Limtiaco?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the fact that the bill has yet to be signed into law, though, how is this
I'm sorry, Senator Limtiaco?
The fact that Bill one seventy-four dash thirty-two has yet to be signed into law?
Mm-hmm.
You know, is the language accurate? I'm not sure it actually should be in this, in the bill altogether for the fact that it hasn't been signed into law.
I believe it is because what this does is, when this bill passes, then if, if Bill one seventy-four is enacted into law, then it would be repealed. So if the governor vetoes the bill, then this basically does nothing because the bill was vetoed. If the governor lets Bill one seventy-four lapse into law, then we would have a double appropriation if we kept both the appropriation in here and the appropriation in that statute. But if it passes into law, if it's enacted into law, then that appropriation is repealed and the appropriation in here is what would be effective.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, and that's what begged the question as to whether or not the language here should be amended to have that conditional terminology such as if it becomes law?
Right.
In the event that Bill one seventy-four thirty-two becomes law, it is hereby repealed?
Yeah. But I think that it should be that the law that is enacted is repealed. Rather than the law that may be enacted is repealed. No, it's only if it goes into law is it repealed. Yeah, if it's not signed, then this is superfluous. If it, if it is signed or if it lapses into law, it is repealed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to voice my concern with the language.
Senator Yamashita?
Speaker Ben, I have an amendment. And I'm thinking this is the right place, but I'm not sure. And it's about prior year obligations. It would be to add a new section, section twenty-five. The Superintendent of the GDOE is authorized to use funds from the appropriations made in section one, part one, chapter two of this act for, to pay for prior year unpaid compromise compensation due to unprocessed personal actions for authorized detailed appointments and court-ordered pay. We've typically had this language, Speaker Ben, and so
Yes. So the amendment that was read by Senator Yamashita, any discussions, no objections? The amendment will carry. We're now in the administrative provisions. Authorization for Matching Requirements for Federal Grants and Aids. This allows the departments to expend the appropriation, funds appropriated in this act for matching requirements for federal grants. Carryover of local and federal matching program funds, allowed it to be carried over past the fiscal year as long as it's matching federal grants. Carryover language also as well. Section two, no additions or deletions. Gov-Guam Retirement Fund Rate of Contribution. This was set up by the retirement fund pursuant to statutes, thirty point oh three percent. No addition or deletions. Autonomous Agency Revenues and Expenditure Reported to Imagalahin Guam. Same language as in previous budgets, requiring the semi-autonomous and autonomous agencies to report their revenues and expenditures. No additions or deletions. Revenue Tracking Report, again, another report that's been required in previous budgets, BBMR, Revon Tax, DOA, to report at the end of each month, fiscal year, the revenue tracking, the balance based upon actual collections of the preceding month and preparing actual and projected revenues. Additions or deletions, none? Prior Year Appropriations Report, again, requiring effectively to work with the administration for deficit spending prevention as well as reduction of the government of Guam. This is, again, requirement in previous budgets so that we understand what our prior obligations are. Additions or deletions, none? Exemption from BBMR Allotment Control, certain departments and agencies, the Legislature, Office of Finance and Budget, Public Defender, Unified Judiciary, Mayor's Council, Public Accountability, Attorney General, University of Guam, GCC, are exempt from the allotment control of BBMR. Additions or deletions, none? Special Fund Transfer, unless specified in this act, Imagalahin is authorized. Otherwise specified in the act, the governor is allowed to transfer from the general fund cash available to, from special funds, but also requires the reimbursements of such funds. Additions or deletions, none? Facilities Insurance Requirements, again, with the FEMA grants we've received, they have required that insurance be given for those buildings that are reconstructed using FEMA grants and allowing the departments and agencies to procure such requirement, required insurance. Additions or deletions, none? Reporting Requirements of Nonprofit Organizations, all of those receiving federal grant, I mean grants and program funds from the government of Guam are required to report their activities. Again, carryforward language from previous budgets, none? Fund Revisions, Reversions, unless otherwise specified in the fact, the general fund, tourist attraction fund, Healthy Futures Fund, Territory Educational Facilities Fund, and the Guam Highway Fund, all their unexpendited and unencumbered balances shall revert back to the set special funds. Additions or deletions, none? Restrictions on the Home Use of Vehicles, carryforward from other previous budgets, unless authorized first responder, they shall not be allowed to take them home unless they're first responders and emergency personnel. Additions or deletions, none? General Fund Transfer? General Fund Transfer Authority of Imagalahin Guam, he gets the ten percent transfer authority between fiscal year two thousand, general fund executive branch appropriations. Additions or deletions, none? Email Addresses Paid For with Government of Guam Funds, carryforward languages, they shall all be available to the general public so they can communicate with the departments and agencies for government-paid addresses. Additions or deletions, none? Uniform Allowances Authorized Shall Be Not Less Than One Hundred and Fifty Dollars and Shall Be Issued to the Employees in the First Quarter. Additional deletions, none? Gov-Guam Staffing Patterns, previous requirements in previous budgets of the staffing patterns of the departments and agencies shall be made to the Speaker of the Legislature. Additions or deletions, none? Quarterly Statements of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance Report. Again, this is Department of Revenue and Text, Department of Administration, quarterly revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance according to GAAP shall be reported to the Imagalahin Guam and the Speaker no later than thirty days at the end of each quarter. Monthly Cash Balance Report for General and Special Funds, again, Department of Administration shall report to Imagalahin Guam and the Speaker, the cash deposits, withdrawals, and ending cash balances of the funds of the government of Guam. No additions or deletions? Funding Source, in addition to the appropriations in addition to the appropriations authorized in Chapter four, departments and agencies are authorized to expand to the levels collected for the following funds, and they're listed from A through O. Senator Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I want to amend item L, the Department of Public Health and Social Services, and on line eighteen to add the DPHSS Sanitary Inspection Revolving Fund.
Sanitary
Inspection and Revolving Fund.
Okay.
And I want to also add language, Mr. Chair, that, that, that states that the sum of three hundred forty-five thousand dollars is appropriated from the Sanitary Inspection Revolving Fund to the Department of Public Health and is solely authorized for expenditure by the Division of Environmental Health as provided pursuant to section twenty-six A one oh six of ten GCA and as required for startup personnel, equipment, and supplies for the development and operations of the new mosquito lab and food screening lab.
On that amendment, no objections. Amendment carries. Section twenty is the nine plus three expenditure forecast? Oh, Senator Ogden?
I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker. I just had a quick question with regards to section nineteen because obviously we're allowing the agencies to be able to expand whatever is generated out of the revolving fund. But looking at line number twenty-four, Customs and Quarantine, so the appropriation that was previously stated, the thirteen point five million dollars is the appropriation that is made for Customs and Quarantine operation. But then should they generate, when they implement the adjusted fee and they generate, let's say fourteen point five million dollars, then they, this provision would allow them that flexibility to continue to expend those resources based on what I just, I shared with the body a little earlier? So that, that's the intent of this section as it applies to that revolving fund. So Customs and Quarantine would not have to come back for an additional appropriation authorization. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
That would be correct. But only for what is authorized in the enabling statute. Section twenty, nine plus three expenditure forecast, again, this is for development of the FY two thousand and fifteen budget, basically, that the departments and agencies shall submit the executive branch, the legislature, the unified judiciary, the Attorney General, Public Defender, Mayor's Council, Office of Public Accountability, and the Guam Visitors Bureau shall all provide nine plus three forecasts in FY two thousand and fourteen. Additions or deletions, none? Section twenty-one, Energy Savings, Incentive to Conserve Energy, at the Guam, at the Guam Community College, University of Guam, and all mayor offices are hereby authorized to transfer any unexpendited FY two thousand and fourteen appropriations for utilities to other expenditure categories within their respective budgets. And this is not subject to the transfer authority of the governor of Guam. So it just allows them to use those savings for other operational requirements. Additions or deletions, none? Appropriation Allocation Report, BBMR shall submit within a written appropriation allocation report for the departments and agencies and the executive branch outlining parts two, three, and four of chapter three, chapter five, identifying the amounts of the appropriations by ASA four hundred account numbers inclusive of the appropriation type, year, fund code, agency code, and so forth. Additions or deletions, none? Personnel-Related allocations, chapter fourteen, Government of Guam Employee Salary Step Increments. This is the appropriation for agency for step increments. The increments have been lifted, and so these are the allocations for all the departments and agencies for their increase for FY two thousand and fourteen. Total's eight hundred and forty-one, eight hundred forty-one thousand five hundred and seventeen. Additions or deletions, none? Section four, allocations for medical, dental, and life insurances for the departments and agencies. Again, these are the allocations for these programs for legislature, Department of Education, University of Guam, Guam Community College, and Public Defender Service Corporation. Senator Limtiaco?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are we in the next section?
Yes. Section
We're not on increments anymore, right?
No.
We're on a part two?
We're, we are on
Are we still on part one? I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I thought we were on part two. Are we on part two, medical, dental, and life insurance?
We are on Oh, no, we, we
Sorry.
We were done with it. These are the premiums for the, these departments and agencies for health insurance, and this is based on the sixty-eight million dollar figure, correct? Did you have a question on section three?
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I thought we, are we on part two of the Government of Guam Employee Medical, Dental, and Life Insurance?
Yes.
Okay. I do have a question regarding section two
Okay.
of this section where the language reads selection of health insurance carrier, where it's, it says Imagalahin Guam shall select the health insurance carrier that offers the most economical and beneficial health insurance proposal plan for government of Guam employees and retirees. And, and this is, this goes back to the prior session that we had in which we wanted to convene the committee of the whole and to find out whether or not somewhere along the line in that procurement process, the, the legislature intervening in that may, may cause some sort of issues regarding the procurement. And so, you know, at this time, I'd like to recess to call in the necessary parties so we can ask the question regarding the notice of awards that were sent out and whether the ramifications of those notice of awards are going to bind us to not only the notice of award premiums, but also the premiums that are being listed here.
Yeah, this is a restatement of existing statute. So this is not a, this statute exists prior to the RFP that was adopted by this legislative body. So we're not adding any new criteria. This is a reiteration of existing law. So it's not new language, and it's not language done after the issuance of the RFP. This was existing language prior to the issuance of the RFP. But for the selection of the most economical and beneficial, so we lifted that from statute. But, you know, so that's just the reason why it's in here. It's not, it's, it's not, again, it's not new legislation. It's existing legislation with regards to the selection It's existing legislation with regards to the selection of that in previous legislation that was authorized. And it was a subject of discussion in the Attorney General's opinion, and even Attorney General quoted that as existing statute. It was the for approval that was deleted pursuant to the Attorney General's opinion.
If you wish to make a motion to delete, we could entertain that motion. Well, I guess what I'm unsure of is whether or not, or maybe you can advise the body, whether or not the language in here has any effect on the notice of awards that have been issued to the current insurance providers for the non-exclusive plan and whether or not that that's going to bind our government from not only honoring the premiums associated with the non-exclusive plan and the premiums that are listed here.
Well, obviously, the administration has decided not to follow that law by issuing their intent-to-award for non-exclusive. So that decision's already... We believe that the notice of intent-to-award has been issued. So the administration has made a decision not to choose the most economical and beneficial. So it has no effect because the administration does have the purview of making the selection. So the governor has the right to select what is presented to him to go either exclusive or non-exclusive, and he's already done that. So it really doesn't interfere with that process because the governor's made his decision for that purpose. And this was, again, I reiterate that this is existing statute prior to the issuance of the RFP. So that's been a known factor even in the decision to make the presentation to the governor and the governor making the decision.
Okay. And having said that, though, the effect on the agency allocations as proffered in Section Three, in the event that... That, well, the fact that the awards were made, my concern is whether or not those premiums are in addition to these premiums. They're not.
These are based on the non-exclusive rate.
Non-exclusive?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Respechau?
Yeah, thank you very much, Ms. Chair. You know, I won't belabor the issue, but this is one area where I'd like to point out and recognize you for compromising in this whole wanting to recognize the amount of money that would be saved both to the taxpayers and to our active retirees by way of providing for their premium payments. And so, Mr. Speaker, if you're right, I believe that if we left the language in, it just provides for two options. And unlike Bill 174, there was just the amount that was appropriated was enough to cover as if though the governor would have chose the more economical and beneficial route. So I just want to recognize you in front of our colleagues and before the public that this is one area of a major compromise from us to them. Thank you.
And it fully funds, like I said, it's based on the non-exclusive rate. For the health insurance program requirement reporting under Section Five, again, these are requirements for the health insurance carriers to submit monthly reports on their enrollments, enrollees, the departments and agencies where they're enrolled, to within 20 days at the end of each month, and all of those that are participating in the health insurance program are required to also report detailing the individual insurance premium payment received by the Governor of Guam for each carrier from the Governor of Guam by date and agency to Isla Estaturang Guahan no less than 20 days after the end of each month for fiscal year 2014. Carryover language from previous budgets as well. Additions or deletions? None. Which brings us to Section Six, severability. If any provision of this act or its application to any person or circumstance is invalid, the invalidity shall not affect the other provisions or the applications of the act, which can be given without the invalid provision or application, and to this end, the provisions of these acts are severable. Additions or deletions? None. That then brings us to the end of the bill. Senator Uggan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for recognizing me, just so that everyone understands the... First of all, I want to thank the Chair and our colleagues for giving the legal counsel the flexibility to be able to prepare language, but it was circulated a few minutes ago just so that everyone understands exactly the language that is going to be... That has been adopted and will be inserted in Sections Two, Three, Four, Five, and Six of Chapter 12 that would require reporting requirements if, in fact, retired officers, law enforcement officials are hired within the law enforcement agency. So I just want to make sure everyone is privy to that. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
So we accept the written amendment that was offered for that section and adopt it. All right. Senator Respechau?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker, and colleagues. At the conclusion of our discussion of Bill Number 177-32COR, as amended in the Committee of the Whole, I'm hoping, as well as you are and most of us, and not all of us, that after going through 182 pages line by line, that this fifth version really recognizes what you pointed out from the very beginning, this is a compromise, and hopefully, the votes on this measure will reflect that this bill really goes a long way to bridging those philosophical differences. So having said that, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chairman, I move that we rise from the Committee of the Whole on the matter of Bill 177-32 with all the amendments that remain intact and that the recommendation is to pass.
All right. On that motion?
Mr. Chair, I have to object. You know, we're at that one section of the transfer of employees that is still of a concern to us, and that we'd like to explore that further, you know, before we actually rise from the Committee of the Whole, so that we can address those issues, and once they're addressed, then we can rise from the Committee of the Whole, move on, and vote on the bill.
But, Senator Ada, we're just trying to resolve the issue of the FY 2014 budget. This is the budget for next fiscal year, not for this fiscal year. You understand that, right?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and I do understand that. And I do understand that also the hospital will be moving on to next fiscal year also. And I understand that they're going to be... They're in the red, and for them to be further in the red come October 1st, I mean, it would be reckless of us to do that. I mean, all we're asking is that we recess from this Committee of the Whole. Let's go back and look at what's going on. Let's reexamine it, and if there's something that we can make a change to before we rise from this committee, be it we take funds from one place to another so that we can appropriate to the hospital. If the governor didn't appropriate enough funds, then let's do it as his body. But if this is... You want to rise from the Committee of the Whole, my objection still stays.
There's an objection to the motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole, and we'll call for the vote. All in favor of rising from the Committee of the Whole, please raise your hand. Motion carries. This Committee of the Whole will now rise.